Eileen.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, we advise that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board of town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would be taking place on Monday, November fifteenth at seven P M via Zoom webinar. Craig Plutner? Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joyce Segal?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Shandru Hargani?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Blatt?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here. Okay, before we begin, I have a couple of items for the board members. The first is, and I know some of you like to mock up your studies or your your dens, all kinds of paperwork. For those of you who have kept the Scott Dorfman nineteen Randall Drive matter, it's time to throw the papers away. They are not coming back before the zoning board, and I'm upset about that. Now, the second thing I want to say to the board members is that the Township Committee has hired a company. The company is to do a couple of things, one of which was to get involved in the zoning ordinance, and they asked two members of this board to serve as a subcommittee to give some comments about changes that might be made in the zoning ordinance. They called me and asked me to do it as well. I declined on the grounds that I didn't think it was appropriate for the chair of a zoning board to give comments about the zoning ordinance. And I suggested that they go back and look at the last two or three annual reports that we have filed. Certainly, the one from two thousand seventeen, and I think the one from two thousand eighteen and maybe nineteen as well, had lots and lots of suggestions for changes. The gentleman I spoke to, his name I did not get, said that he had looked at those reports and had taken them into consideration. I don't know whether this committee and whether this ordinance change is going to happen with this corporation or not. But in any event, I spoke briefly about it to Rob Simon, who came up with a good suggestion, and I discussed it with Craig Plutner, and that is to have a sit down on the video, of course, among all the board members, or anyone who wanted to show up to just have a sit down and discussion about some of the things that we have in the past suggested, and some of the things that Craig Plutner and Jessica Blatt came up with, and just anything that you guys wanted to raise as possible inclusions in our annual report. And I thought that was a good idea, and Craig did as well. So I'm going to throw it out there, and I have a couple of dates in mind. I know that from now until Thanksgiving, we're really totally tied up, both with family and with zoning board and other considerations. But I'm throwing out there two dates. December two, which is a Thursday, and December seven, which is a Tuesday. And I'm going to just let those hang out there for a minute, and we'll talk about in a minute the time when we'll get together, let's just chat about this stuff. But it'll be a closed meeting that will be just board members saying whatever they want to say about the zoning ordinance. But I'm curious now as to whether those of you with whom I have not spoken think that's a good idea. So anyone who would like to comment, by all means, to say something.
So quickly, let me just add some color to what Joe's talking about. Jessica and I were asked by Township Committee as sort of an ad hoc group to discuss the zoning code. Now, it's not just just the zoning code. It actually is a lot more encompassing than that, from zoning code to building code to B two, B three districts. There's a lot to this. This isn't just, you know, go over the annual reports from the zoning meetings and just say, okay, well, let's just throw that at the code and fix it. There's a lot more to this. Right now, a company by the name of Topology was hired to assist in the and just, you know, tweaking the zoning code. And some of the things that we addressed in this were corner lots, front yard setbacks in sort of like the R six zones and things like that. So it's sort of stuff that we see on a fairly regular basis, and we gave some recommendations to this committee for review. Nothing conclusive has come of this, so, you know, this meeting is fine, but at the end of the day, it's if you want to do it, it's just it's going to be more like spitballing in a think tank. Because at this point, I'm not really sure where the town council's going with any of this, or where this committee is even going. In fact, I have to give these guys a tour of the town next Monday from Topology just to even understand and contextualize some of the issues of second floor decks and rooftop decks and some of the elements of design we see on houses. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. So I just wanted everyone to kind of have a little bit of background as to what's going on. And by a little, I mean a little. There's a lot more to this, from environmental standards to sustainability to
Historic preservation.
I'm sorry, was that Jessica?
Yeah, historic preservation.
Right.
There are many facets to it. You know, one one thought that I had is perhaps instead of trying to have a meeting, maybe and perhaps other members of our board who's, you know, you're sitting, you know, at the zoning board meetings the same way that Craig and I are, maybe it would be helpful to see the suggestions that we've already given on behalf of zoning, which again is really just based on what we see on a fairly regular basis. And just see, you know, we could we could submit it to all the board members and see if anyone has anything else that they think is important to add, and, you know, we'd be happy to, you know, raise those issues. Craig, what are what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, so I'll also I'll circulate it to everyone. I know Joe already has seen it. And these are recommendations that Jessica and I came up with, basically the same stuff that we all see, week in and week out, and I guess more or less our opinion of how to solve some of it. But of course, open to everybody. And like I said, first of all, don't don't feel like anyone is excluded. I think this thing is very ad hoc. This is not something that that they just, I think they just picked us off the zoning board and said, hey, would you like to be part of this, just to give a zoning board thirty thousand foot view as to what you guys deal with on a weekly basis? And if we see repetition, is there any way possible to avoid some of it? So I'll send around to everyone the recommendations that were made. And if anyone has anything they'd like to add on, feel free. There is no timeframe on this, as far as I can tell, and nothing they come of it.
Let's see how the board members feel about having a basically a closed meeting of the zoning board to just kick these things around.
Can I just say something?
Can we have, can this be a closed session? I don't know that it rises.
Well, yeah, I mean, to go to executive session, you know, is not, you can do it, but it has to be condoned by statute. And the question is whether we can, you know, in essence, have a closed session meeting. I think that two comments, or actually three comments, if I remember all three. Number one is that I don't see a reason why we necessarily have to do something like that in in closed session. I think it can be just, you know, part of our general discussion. We could put it on the agenda and just have have a discussion about things that we're seeing coming up, and maybe some recommendations just generally. But I think Craig makes an excellent point, which is that it is ad hoc because it has to be ad hoc. In fact, you know, the adoption of ordinances, you know, usually starts from either the Township Committee or it'll start from the planning board. It really doesn't start from the Board of Adjustment. We're here to grant variances or to deny variances. That's our job statutorily. But I think it's an excellent idea. I think Joe makes a good point that it's important, to the extent that there's things that come up time and time again, even things nuances that go beyond the annual report. I mean, there's plenty of cases where applicants revise their plans, they withdraw their applications without prejudice, et cetera, and we see things that aren't necessarily showing up, you know, in the annual report that I think would be good things to bring to the attention of whether it's Topology or the Township Committee or the like. Yes, my third point is that it may be based on Craig's comments and Jessica's, maybe a maybe a little premature to have that discussion. It seems like Topology, and I've worked with Topology on a whole host of issues over the years, is it sounds like they're still getting their arms around the township and our ordinance. And keep in mind, I think to Jessica's point, that that and also Craig's, that there are a lot of things that sounds like that are being asked of this ad hoc committee that go well beyond our purview into whether it's environmental, historic preservation, stormwater management, and the like that we don't typically see unless it's part of a site plan application. So I think for all those reasons, maybe, you know, you take the temperature of the board members, Mr. Chairman, but if there is a consensus to have a discussion, maybe we hold off a little bit before having it, and I don't know if necessarily we need to have it in closed session because it's stuff that's happened in the public session anyway.
So to echo what Rod just said, I think this it's very premature right now. I don't know if Jessica agrees, but I feel that we were kind of making some traction as this ad hoc committee towards kind of the end zone. But then then they decided to hire this this consulting firm, and it, I feel like it kind of set us right back to almost square one. So now we're starting over with them, and, you know, it's sort of like if any one of us were dunked into another town and said, okay, familiarize yourself with zoning code of X Y Z town, it would take us quite a bit of time to get up to speed. And other than, you know, normal municipal land use law, but the nuance of that town. So they're kind of in that phase still. So I think that that it, I don't, I wouldn't know what to discuss on December seventh or second myself at this point, other than someone reviewing the recommendations that were put forward. Other than saying, okay, those are really good, or I disagree with them, that's about it. Because there's really nothing more that we can either explore or do from our standpoint.
Well, I think that that's enough. My own view is that just going over what you and Jessica have discussed and put down on this three page sheet is worth putting before the zoning board to see what their reaction is. That's my own view.
So I guess the best way then from there is how, what's the best way to communicate this? Because certainly, you know, I don't want to be, I mean, is it best to be communicated through Eileen? Or should I just launch it out? Because I don't want to be in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Yeah.
Craig, why don't you shoot it off to me? Let me take.
Yeah, all right, great. Thanks.
Okay. I'm throwing out those two dates.
Well, before, let me just say that I believe December second, which is a Thursday, is historic preservation, correct Nicole? First Thursday of the month is HPC. We can't have two, we can't have two formats, we can't have two meetings going at the same time, so.
Why not?
Because the system can't, the system can't, for the same reason we can't, we just can't. It can't do, I can't do two, let me set one up if there's one already in progress. They can only only one, remember, we had that issue where there was a meeting going on? We couldn't get onto our meeting. They had to get off because the
But this is, this is not, if I'm hearing it correctly, this may not be a public meeting in the sense that
Yeah, but it still has to be sent, set up on the Zoom format. I can't do two Zoom, if there's one already set up for HPC, theirs will override ours because theirs has to be
You're saying technically
It needs to support two meetings running at the same time. Can't do it.
We're about December seventh.
Um, that's a Tuesday, and I don't know if there's a Township Committee meeting.
I can say I'm out on the seventh. It's my father's birthday, he's turning ninety, so that's going to take precedent over this.
I, I can set it up for you, but somebody else would have to host it.
Do we want to maybe just get get our recommendations sent out to the board first? Joe, because I want to make sure that everyone has time to actually read through everything and then give it some thought, and then maybe we could discuss this at a, you know, another meeting and set a date, see if anyone thinks that we need to set set a date. I just, I don't want to do anything prematurely and set a date when when the board members haven't even had a chance to look over, you know, the recommendations that we've that we've made already.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. So why don't we, why don't we, yes, Joy.
Is there a way that we could do it, that like a Google Doc where people can also add and comment? Not general people, but the members of this board can look at your recommendations and make notations about it, so everything's put together?
I guess we could do that. Some of this, I'm just looking, I have the three pages in front of me. Some of it I wouldn't even put on the agenda for this board to talk about. For example, historical preservation, there's a whole section on that. And I don't think that's appropriate for this board to comment on historical preservation.
Right, but see, part of the component of this meeting is they want our opinion on other things. So that's why that's in there.
I understand that.
So they assigned us a part of the code to to look at, but our job also is to examine the entire code, not just zoning. So we're looking at building, we're looking at HPC's integration to all this.
I understand that.
So
That's, that's what the topology
No, that's actually before Topology was involved.
Before Topology was even involved.
Okay, but that's not what this board needs to do, in my judgment. I think it might be useful for this board to sit down and take a look at the zoning ordinance and what you guys had said about the zoning ordinance to see what, if any, changes might be appropriate to have the primature of this board as well as the two of you. Anyway, that's my view. But if, since those two dates don't sound like they're going to do anything, why don't we wait till the meeting of this board on December sixth and determine at that time whether folks think it would be a good idea to sit down and review those elements that are on the sheets of paper that have to do with zoning and whether it is a good idea or not.
Amy.
I would, yeah, I would say that I really like Joy's idea. I think if we take whatever portion of that document is pertinent to the zoning board, and we could all just add our comments if we have any, or say, no comments, then we would know the scope of what we're really talking about and whether meetings really needed or not. Maybe, maybe, you know, everything's already been covered and we agree with it all, or maybe we have a few comments to add and and that's it. But without reviewing it first and seeing what everyone thinks, it's kind of hard to know.
Well, let's do this then. Let's read it. Craig, you'll be responsible for getting it into the hands of everybody on the board. And let's talk about it at our next meeting. Okay, now, for the members of the public who are here tonight, there's one a matter that is not being heard tonight. It's calendar number thirty eight nineteen dash twenty one. This is a matter that is was continued from the October eighteenth meeting, and it's not not going to be heard tonight. It's going to be heard on December twenty two thousand twenty one. That's at the request of the applicant. The other matters
Joe, I'm sorry, before we go beyond that, let's just be clear that the application that you're discussing that's being carried to December twentieth, that's for property located at one Cambridge Drive where the applicant is Lori Goldberg, correct?
Correct. And we, and we ought to be clear that it's being carried to the meeting of this board on December twenty at seven P M on the Google, on the Zoom format.
With no further notice to be provided to the public?
No notice will be provided, either by notice by the mails or in the newspapers. Okay, so that leaves us with five cases tonight. We have the first one, the first two are actually matters that we've heard previously and that are back before the board. The first is ninety Undercliffe Road in Milburn. So I'm going to ask if there's anyone here representing the applicant in that case, or the applicant.
Do we have to do minutes and memorialization?
Yeah, we haven't done any.
Just the minutes, just the minutes of memorialization. We have one set of minutes before us, which are the minutes of the zoning board on September twentieth. It was a closed session. Eileen, you've done those minutes, correct?
Yeah, I sent them out.
And you sent them out. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the closed meeting zoning board of adjustment on September twenty?
I move adoption of the meetings from the closed, the closed, the closed, the minutes from the closed meeting on September twentieth.
Is there a second?
A second.
Who said that?
Joy.
Joy. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor, hands up, where we can see them. I see five, six, seven hands. Okay. The minutes are adopted. Now, we have some memorializations tonight. Is that right, Rob?
Correct, we have three memorializations that were added to the agenda. Correct, and Eileen?
Yeah, there's three. Koo, Chalasani, and Singh.
The true memorial, the true memorialization was resubmitted. Is that correct, Rob?
Yeah, I believe I circulated, there was one typo that I picked up. Thank you to Wolfgang. Joy, as usual, did an awesome job with some revisions, but I believe I picked them all up, and I think they're all, they've all been circulated as revised.
Great. So on the Brian and Suki Koo matter, which is calendar thirty seven eighty six dash twenty one, is there a motion to adopt the memorialization prepared by our attorney?
Time moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I could do a roll call.
Let's do a roll call, please, for those who are eligible.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The second memorialization was calendar thirty eight twenty five dash twenty one. Sonia Singh, block forty four oh one, lot one. That is property at Two Deer Fields. Any additions or corrections to the memorialization as prepared by our attorney, Rob Simon? If not, is there a motion to adopt this memorialization?
I move adoption of memorializations for calendar number thirty eight twenty five dash twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The last one is Keith Chalyan Chalasani, calendar number thirty eight twenty two dash twenty one. That's block forty five oh one, lot thirty five. You have the people who are eligible on this one, Eileen. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Is there anyone not eligible on this case?
Jessica's the only one not eligible. Jessica, Amy, and Shandru, all the full members, all the other full members are eligible.
All right, is there a motion to adopt memorialization in calendar thirty eight twenty two dash twenty one?
Adoption.
Second. Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, now that we've gotten a little of that out of the way, we're going to move to our agenda. And the first case listed on our agenda for tonight is calendar thirty eight sixteen dash twenty one, which was continued from October the fourth nineteen nineteen twenty one, two thousand twenty one. And the applicant is Hamid Sangari. Anyone representing the applicant, or is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
I'm here.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, dear board, thank you for having me again and accommodating in short notice. I am Hamid Sagari. We are the owner of ninety Undercliffe. I'm a registered architect licensed in New York City, but in tonight, I'm representing myself as the owner. I don't have any expert witness.
Does he have to be sworn in again?
Let's, let's see what he's intending. First of all, what are you intending to present? In addition to what you've already presented?
Oh, I didn't present anything last time. It was cut short because my paperwork was not in order. So we didn't talk about what I wanted to do.
Okay, so with
That's where the witness
And then let's get him qualified to the extent that he's going to present expert testimony as an architect, if he is.
If you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear a firm testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not for the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hamid Raza Sagari, four oh seven Hobart Avenue, Short Hills, New Jersey.
And Mr. Sagari, I understand that you're a licensed architect in the state of New York. You're not licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, why don't you just briefly provide for the Okay, um, why don't you just briefly provide for the board uh, your credentials as a licensed architect in the state of New York? Just so the board has a little bit of a background as to your background.
Yeah, I, I have a architectural office in, in the state of New York. We are mostly focused on a building envelope. We do restoration, we do alteration, we do a, a lot of alteration review for condos and co-ops. And we do some uh, single-family and multifamily design, but it's not the uh, big part of our practice.
But, but you've been retained professionally to prepare floor plans and elevations for single-family homes?
Many times, yes.
And is your license in New York in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I, I keep it, keep in mind that uh, Mr. Sagari, of course, is not licensed to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey. But you've heard his background um, as a New York architect, and I, I believe that um, the board can proceed at this point.
Mr. Sagari?
Yes.
Would you like to tell us?
Sure.
This is a property owned by you?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, well, what is it you want to do?
If you don't mind, I share the screen with you.
Please.
So this is ninety Undercliffe. It's a small corner lot property.
Okay, Mr. Sagari, before we continue.
Yes.
Is what you're showing us what you've already submitted to the board?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there, and there's been no alterations?
Yeah, no alteration.
So the, as, as this, your set of eleven drawings uh, dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one?
I believe it is, but just let me. Yes. It is Octo- October twenty-five twenty-one.
Thank you.
Yes. So as you see, the, all property is a small corner lot uh, property. We have two bedroom on the second floor and one bedroom in, in the first floor that we intend to uh, add it to the living space. If you look at the existing setbacks, if we go with the required setback, the white triangle is what we can build on, on the property. Uh, and the, the hatch line is the existing setback line, established setback line. All requests where it comes to the zoning, it has two parts. One part is we have a attic over the first floor. We want to add this attic to our living space and add, uh, turn it to our third bedroom upstairs. We are not changing any setbacks here. And I believe what we are doing in term of the design uh, it's in line with our neighboring, neighboring buil- buildings. As you can see here, the blue line is our proposed. We are not increasing the height of the building in general. And we're going to stay in our established setbacks. The second request we have, the second part of this request is the single parking garage that we have with the entry at the side of the building. I would like to turn the uh, garage ninety degree and have the enter, entry of the garage from the street. What this change provide us, provide me is a little space inside to add a bathroom and a powder room. But what happens is when we do this change, we will be out of our established setback. If you see this little hatch line here, is where we're going to be out of our established uh, setback. And that's, that's the uh, zoning variance that I'm requesting here.
Can you give us the dimensions of the, that with those two little triangles?
Oh, I sure can. Let me see if I have it here. This, the long side is like uh, six feet. And directly like this, it is five and a half, maybe. So as a result of this change, I'm reducing the impermeable uh, surface from thirty point, thirty-two point six to thirty point five. And since the last meeting till this meeting, I revised the drawing. So I'm not requesting any F A R variance. We are staying in the permitted F A R. Last meeting, I had close to fifty square feet over the F A R, but I shrink the design. Now I have, I, I'm in the F A R. The other thing is this one-story garage, it's in one floor. So this projection not going to come to the second floor, it's going to stay in first floor. Let me show you. Yes, here it is. This is what I want.
So the F A R variance request is withdrawn?
Yes. And it's reflected in my paperwork now.
Eileen, can you just confirm that, that no F A R variance is required now? Did you check that?
Where did you lose the um, what was reduced in order to accommodate that?
I, I, I shrunk this, this area. And I shrink the second floor. And this is the form and here we are.
So you went from twenty-five thirty-four square feet to twenty, I think twenty-four sixty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I thought according to my notes, twenty-four fifty-five was permitted. Is that wrong?
Based on my survey, my property is slightly larger than uh, what we taught in, in the previous one. Because the survey says we have point one five seven acre.
And you're permitted with thirty-six percent?
Yes.
So could your lot area seventy-three oh three approximately, where I think you initially told us it was sixty-eight thirty-nine?
I'm sorry, but.
The initial paperwork indicated showing a lot area of sixty-eight thirty-nine.
Lot area.
That's, that's what it shows on the zoning tape.
Sixty. I, I'm sorry, what, what was the lot area before?
Well, you, you, on your attachment, after the, what you just submitted.
Uh-huh.
You indicated that you have six thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine.
That's correct, that's correct.
Then you're over by three square feet.
Three square feet?
On F A R.
If, if I have to shave three square feet, I will, I, I didn't.
You will.
That, that was because we rounded it to the lower number, but yes, we might be over by three square.
Okay, so you're, go ahead, Eileen.
I was going to say, if, if you're withdrawing the F A R, then when you present to me for the permit, if you're not going to get the floor area ratio variance if you're withdrawing it, you just have to make sure that whatever you submit to me.
Yes, I, I understand that. But I, I thought because we are rounding it to the lower number, three square feet falls in the lower number. If not, I will shave the, the, well, with three square feet, it's not a problem.
Okay, so, so your representation is that this project will result in an F A R that is at or below twenty-four sixty-two?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, while, while on the subject, does, does reorienting the garage door require a variance in this zone?
Not specifically reorienting, no, this is, front-facing garages are permitted in the zone. So that doesn't trigger the variance, just that it's in the, it's within the forty-foot setback. He will have to get a, a, you know, you're going to have to go to D P W for a new curb cut, and you're going to have to close off what's there, so.
Thank you.
Anything more?
I, I do, don't have anything more to say, except if, if you approve my application, I, I will be very grateful. We bought this property in the spring. We thought it's going to be an easy process. Uh, we were wrong, and we are excited to start and, and make it a home.
Eileen?
Yes.
Variance is, is he now seeking?
He still needs a front yard setback because everything that he's doing is within the forty-foot setback. Because his house is existing at I think that, that the closest point is twenty-two feet. He's going to be twenty-two, nineteen point three, and.
I, I thought it's fifteen point three.
Yeah, I can't.
Yeah.
Originally, it's twenty-two feet. In one point, when, when we bring the, we, we, when we turn the garage, at the shorter point, it's going to turn to fifteen feet, three inches.
Fifteen feet, three inches, and then there's a portion, well, every at the post, it's fifteen feet, three and a half inches.
Yes.
Mr. Sagari, where are you getting your lot size from? Because I just like doing some quick calculations here, and I find it smaller. I should, like, six thousand eleven square feet.
The survey indicates that it's got, that it's point one five seven plus or minus acres, which comes out.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just calculated it's point one three eight, so I guess.
No, point, uh, yes, it comes out to sixty-eight thirty-eight point two.
Okay.
Based on the survey information.
Yeah, I got it from survey.
Yeah. So he needs front yard setback. He also needs um, side yard setback for the addition because it's going over existing along that uh, as you're looking at it from Raway Road, I guess if you want to call it the right side of property line. I can't read that number. It's non-conforming and he's building above it. It's seven feet where where they are.
Mr. Sagari, can you just point out what Ms. Davids referring to on the plan that we're seeing, please?
We have a, a small backyard or, or pathway here, which is seven feet and a little change. It has to be eight feet uh, by zoning. We are not touching it. It's existing, so it's, it's.
So everything he's building above it requires variance to me.
Yeah. And, and in this side, we have thirty foot, eight inches, we, we will stay in, in the same line. We're just going to raise this, the uh, attic on the first floor to turn it to a bedroom.
Which also is a front yard setback violation.
How much?
So the this shows this white triangle, it's what we are, we can build based on the uh, setbacks. The rest of the building is an established setback. We are not confirming in any site.
So your problem, your problem is with your second floor height, correct?
My, my problem is that I'm building on, on a property that is not confirming. So if we look at the here is the existing. Here is the purpose. So we are raising this area to, to help with the shape and height of the building. I even pitched outside of the roof, so we, we'll be a little shorter. But still, we are building over the established setback, which is not confirming. So we, we need a variance here. The same in the back of the building. We are not building anything in the back, but it's not confirming and will stay not confirming.
Do you have enough to draw uh, memorializing resolution?
If you're, Joe, is that for me? Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand certainly. I have reviewed all the plans and I understand uh, the application as well as the relief that is being requested by the applicant. Um, it was important to clarify that in fact, no F A R variance was being requested by the applicant. And I think we're, I think we're down to three setback variances.
And those three variances are, will somebody be more specific?
Side yard setback, additional side yard setback, and front yard setback due to the second floor.
That's correct.
But is there a motion to approve the applicant?
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. First of all, we need to open it up to the public for, for questions, and then we would have to open it up to the public for comments.
Yeah. Are there comments or questions from the audience? Anyone in the audience?
I don't see, I don't see any hands raised, no.
We'll close the public portion of the meeting.
Um, I'm sorry, Joe, can I um, can I ask a question of the applicant, please?
Yes, I am amazed.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, sir, I just would like to get some testimony on the record as to your understanding of the impact this uh, project will have on your neighbors, uh, most specifically the neighbor that's, you know, to your immediate uh, right. Can you just give us some testimony on that, please?
Okay. We did our best to improve the shape of the building and, and uh, make sure that it's com- it helps the look of the neighborhood and the neighboring building. This is our neighboring building here.
Right.
And this, the blue line is what we proposing, that it's very close to the uh, shape of, of the existing, the, the neighboring build. We don't have any neighbor across us, i- i- it's a, uh, that we don't have any neighbor here in the street, but this is what we are proposing. We think it's an improvement to the existing property and I think it will help our, our neighbors because it's more confirming uh, and, and it's in the same category of, of the shape of our neighboring building.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
I think this is an R5 zone, right?
R6?
R5 or R6?
It's R6.
This is the R6.
Six, yeah.
I, I also have a question.
Yes.
Yes. And this is with respect to the additional side yard setback.
Yes.
And I'm looking at the building volume comparison that you provided, which is very helpful. First of all, so thank you for that. Is, is your existing side, additional side yard setback really seven feet? It looks like it's more than that.
I, I don't have the measurement right here. I, I can't open my CAD drawing and find it out, but I don't believe it's more than, you're talking about this, right? From here to here. And you are going from 22.
No, 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 I'm talking about the additional side yard setback.
Which one?
Seven foot.
This?
Yeah, the one in the back.
So this is seven foot existing and seven foot purpose. Seven a few inches.
But the additional side yard setback, that's for, for the addition, for the second floor, right?
That's for the structure above 18 feet in height.
Correct, but the current structure above 18 feet in height.
Is also seven feet.
Huh, this doesn't look that way from the drawings, but okay.
Well, because they, it's gabled, so, but he's gonna be flush.
That's correct.
With that property line, so he's gonna be seven feet all the way up. As opposed to the existing is gabled from.
And it's being then brought straight up.
Right, so he probably is more conforming. He probably is conforming for the structure above 18 feet in height or more conforming than he.
Right.
Flush.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for board members? Comments from board members?
I would support this application.
Mr. Segari, can you, I'm, I'm sorry Craig, Mr. Segari, can you stop sharing your screen so the board members can see each other? Thank you.
So, as I was saying, I would support this application, I, I think it's been considered of the applicant to remove the FAR variance. Unusual, unusual lot configuration, you know, pretty much a corner all the way around, it's kind of tough to, to develop. Um, you know, using the best he possibly can, you, you know, do I love the mass thing? I don't know if I love the mass thing, but I think it's, it's, it's what works and what can give some usable square feet, so I would, I, I approve the application.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with Craig, um, the house is in desperate need of the renovation, it will really improve the, the streetscape, I think, in, in many respects.
Thank you. I'm also not crazy about the, about the massing, but on the other hand, there's no variance needed for lot coverage, FAR or building coverage, so. And it will, certainly it's gonna be more attractive than what's, than how it's looking now, so that, in that respect, it will be an improvement, for sure.
Is there a motion?
Uh, wait, I think, um.
Troy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, Joy did.
I move approval of this application, then.
Is there a second?
A second.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, the next case is, again, a carryover case. We heard this case.
Hold on, let me bring them over.
Pardon me?
Let me bring them over.
Thank you, everybody, I really appreciate your consideration.
You're welcome.
Not with the project.
Thank you.
All right, this is 17 Park Circle. Is there anyone here representing the applicant on 17 Park Circle?
Dan Dubinette is representing them as the architect, Mr. Kay is here as well.
Mr. Dubinette, are you there? There he is.
And, um, I think Craig indicated that he watched the video of October 27th, so he is eligible to vote on the matter. Um, I don't know if Jody um, watched it, where's Jody? She was not here on the 27th, nor was Shondra.
Yeah, I haven't been able to watch it.
Where's Shondra? Shondra, were you able to?
Uh, no, I wasn't either.
Okay. So we will. Amy, you, you were here, you'll vote in, in Jody's place. And Dan, you're up.
Okay, who's?
Okay.
Who's gonna testify?
You, you're.
I will.
Do you understand you're still sworn?
I do.
Proceed.
Okay, uh, thank you, so we, we presented, um, in the beginning of the month. And there was some concerns and some reservations about what we're asking, so we had the opportunity to, uh, relook at it and, and see if we could, uh, A, solve our needs and B, you know, make it less impactful to the neighbors. And I think we've come up with something really good, so let me share my screen.
Mr. Dubinette, is this something that has been previously submitted to the board?
Um, this is a, uh, in addition to, so we can mark it as A3, I believe.
Okay, hold on a second, hold on a second, please. Okay, A, A3 it is.
Uh, A3, and it's nine slides. Uh, they consist of photographs of the site, uh, architectural drawings. I actually had the opportunity, uh, to use some of the photographs from the neighbors exhibit, uh, so that's also in here as well. And I'll walk you through it.
Please do.
Okay, so this is the, the first slide is the existing house, it's 17 Park Circle. It's located in R4 zone. And it is a relatively small lot for the R4 zone. R4 requires 20,000 square feet, this lot is 10,406 square feet, so it's half the size of a minimum required R4, and so that leads us to some of our hardships. Um, in addition to, this is the site. This is our site, and the existing property is this odd shape that bends this way and this way, so we're 70 feet across the front at the front yard. And then, as we, uh, get to the front yard setback, we're at 90 feet. Uh, the corner of the house, the existing corner of the house is at 6.06 feet, so it's existing non-conforming. Um, and again, the, the orientation of the house on the lot kind of forces our variances that we're seeking tonight, which relate to the side yard setback. Um, we were able to redesign the project and I'll show you that really quickly, but instead of being at 6.06 feet, we're now gonna be able to push the bedroom back and start our ask at 8.5 feet, but as it tapers away, um, you know, the distance from our house to the property line widens quite a bit. I had the opportunity to look at the distance between our house and the adjacent neighbor's home. And at the worst case scenario, at the 6.06 from our house, we're at 20 feet away from a one-story addition on the neighbor's side. And what that all means visually, I'll come back to the chart. Uh, what that means visually, this is what we were seeking before, we were trying to add a bedroom and a laundry room to the second floor of this house. And previously, we had located the addition on top of the garage, creating a dormer on the front and a laundry room on the back with a dormer on the back. And although it was, uh, in my opinion, a very subtle addition, it's still the general consensus that, geez, it was still kind of too close to the side yard setback, so our redesign, this is to show you visual, this is what we were seeking before, basically it was to lift the garage roof a little bit and create a dormer to create the bedroom. So what we propose now is to be able to get the case, still what they're looking for, which is the additional bedroom. We were able to move the bedroom to the back of the garage and relocate the laundry to the back of the house. Maintaining, this, this line here is the existing garage, so I will show you the elevation, so there'll be no dormering to the front of the house. All we're gonna do is extend the roof line of the garage up a little bit higher to be able to get us the space we need, and then we're able to locate the laundry room in the back of the property. Architecturally, we get, uh, this is the concept behind it all. What you're seeing at 14 feet, five inches from the grade to the peak of the garage, so to be able to get the bedroom, the volume of the bedroom to work right in here. We were raising the roof up till it intersects with the existing roof line. Uh, we're gonna maintain this, the roof line here for aesthetic reasons and the dormer to get the space for the bedroom will be in the back, so we took the mass that was kind of centrally located and causing an addition or dormer to the front, and then we're moving it to the back. And I'll show you some, the front elevation, just to give you a visual. So again, we're gonna take the existing ridge line that was here and raise it, it's about six feet higher on that line. This is a photograph, um, of the existing house, so the case house is on the left, the 17 Park, and our neighbor who had the concerns at 19 Park. This is what it exists today, and we were able to do a, a little Photoshop and simulate what it's going to look like, so the red dash line is what's there. And to get the space, we're gonna rise the ridge line up, connect to the back here and come down, so that's the implication that we're going to, um, have on the front of the house, so it's very minimal. I think to the change of the aesthetics of the house. Then I was able to take some of the photographs taken, uh, from the neighbor of views that he had from his family room window, so if we.
Right, so Mr. Dubinette, I'm sorry, as part of this A3, so these photos are the photos that were introduced at the last hearing as O1, as part of O1?
This, I'm not sure what the neighbors exhibit was marked, but this photograph was.
I can, I can represent, yeah, I can represent to you that what was marked by the neighbor was as marked O1 was a series of nine slides. I believe this may have been one of the slides.
This is definitely one of the slides, this is a view from their family room window, that's a transit window, and so what you're seeing is, we tried to overlay the, the proposed design and what's existing, so what's existing is this is the existing ridge of the garage. And the existing house is, is fate in the back, and so we're just gonna bring this up and down, so we'll probably lose about this much, um, sky. But all, all of this remains, you know, open, so I, I do think that's is a low, low impact to, to what they're used to seeing. And certainly, uh, I'll talk about the solar impact, there is none, there's no casting of shadows. This is the same room, but the lower window, so this is also a nice image to be able to present, so again, this is the existing roof line of the garage, and here's our proposed and again, the net differential is this space. And then if we move to, uh, just really quickly, so then this is a, you know, schematic, uh, 3D of what we're doing, again, to reiterate the kind of, uh, sensitivity to the existing house, to the neighbors, and it, it'll give the case the additional bedroom. And of course, the laundry room is a, nice to have, um, without, without impacting the neighbors, uh, at all. And of course, the hardships are the fact that we have a very undersized lot in a, in a more stringent requirements of, of the 22 foot side yard setback. This property is more like the R6, which requires eight. There's a, a lot of open and airspace between the neighbors and the way that the sun moves around the property. Sorry to make it dizzy. So this is the, um, south, this is the east, and this is the west, so the sun would be low in the skyrise here, high midday evening here, so the, this addition wouldn't be able to cast a shadow onto the neighbor, so we would maintain a light, open airspace. I believe that there's truly no negative impact to the zone plan and it's a very sensitive, modest addition. And we hope you like the changes, thank you so much.
So, Mr. Dubinette, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear, the only variance that is being requested by the applicant is with regard to a side yard setback where, uh, required is 22 feet, I guess, on the second floor. And what's now being proposed is 8.5 foot setback?
Yes, so, uh, at the worst, it gets to 8.5 and the violation is 30.5 feet. And for the first floor, the, the violation, um, would be 6.5 feet, because you need, in the R4, you need 15 feet on the first and 22 feet on the second. So those, those are the two variances we need. And, and there is no lock coverage, no building coverage, no FAR, um, I think so.
Can you could just confirm the 8.5 feet, how does that compare to what's existing?
Existing is 6.06 and the way.
Okay.
Yes.
That is right then, okay.
Yeah.
And so how is that changing on the? I don't quite see that.
Yeah, what we did to calculate the, the, our setback, I think this would be a good diagram, bear with me a minute. So from this corner of the house, oops, uh, this corner of the, this corner of the house to our imaginary property line is 6.06 feet. Uh, but what we did was, as soon as, uh, we made the roof change, so this, this area is where we started to calculate our new setback. So that, at that line, we're at 8.5.
Thanks, okay.
Right.
Joe, you're muted.
Joe, you're muted. Mr. Chairman, I think, Mr. Dubinette, do you have any other question, uh, of comments you want to make with regard to the application?
Okay, is there anyone on the board who has any questions of this witness? Is there anyone in the
The, uh, the biggest comment is that, uh, I didn't hear, sorry.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question? Only just questions now.
I have a, a question from Walter Harris.
Okay, let's bring him in.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, yes.
Questions only now.
Wait, we just lost this video. We just lost your, your audio.
Can't hear you, Mr. Harris.
Can you hear me now? Any better? There we go, crank it up a bit. Okay, apologies for that. Yes, I do have a question, actually two from Mr. Dubinette.
Can you just, I'm sorry, just identify yourself and your address, please.
Certainly. My name is Walter Harris. Walter Harris and I live at Nineteen Park Circle.
Wait, Mr. Harris, you keep fading in and out, though. Is there a way you can stay closer to the microphone? Maybe that'll
Yes, I think, I think I, no, I don't know why that's happening. Hold on, something's going wrong. Give me one second here. Okay, possibly that will do it. Is that okay?
No.
You're still fading in and out.
All right, we'll just hang on to it. I have a question first, which is for Mr. Dubinette, which is uh, you stated that the new setback will be eight and a half feet. I'm following up on a board question. But it's six feet now. Does that mean that you're moving the part of the building that is currently at a six-foot setback, so that it is no longer that close to the property line?
Did you hear this?
So existing? Yeah, I got it. I think I got it. The existing home is at six point oh six feet. We are not touching that. That's existing non-conforming. So our proposed addition will then start at eight point five feet. So the home will not be moving, but our new bedroom will be at eight point five feet, the roof line.
So doesn't it follow that before the construction, the setback is six feet, and after the construction, the setback is still six feet?
That's correct. Worst case scenario, but our proposed is at eight point five.
It's not, uh, okay, that's not the way I read the form. I thought it was before and after. Um, understood. So it's still six feet from the limit. Okay. Um, very close, understood. My second question, referring to your diagram entitled, um, ending and revised architectural plan. Which the board already has. I have a question about that. It shows, if I may share my screen, I'll, or if you, if you would just mind, can we, can I call it up, Mr. Chairman, so I can refer to it? Or can he do it? All right, I'll share my screen then. This is, um, what you've already submitted. Second. Okay. There we go. Okay, um, Mr. Dubinette, this is the, uh, one that I saw in the application from you. My question is the following.
Wait, wait, can I, I'm, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Harris. What sheet are you showing right now?
Certainly, I'm showing
And what, what's the date on that plan sheet?
Um, this is off the board's website for tonight's meeting. Um, and, uh, I'll see if I can find a date on it. Let's see.
I just want to make sure that we're dealing with the latest and greatest plans.
It says dated, uh, four twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Well.
Yeah, but there was an update.
Ah, okay.
I don't know.
I believe, I mean, this is, okay, this is off the board's website, uh, perhaps last night. But I'd be happy to look at the current one if
I have handwritten in here, variance update eleven four twenty twenty-one.
All right, anyway, my question is, you can tell me if this, if this is, here's the question. It shows the setback line here, twenty-two feet um, from the edge of the property, obviously. And I don't believe that that is correct. Um, it looks, makes it look like, uh, most of this work is more than twenty-two feet back. As, is it in fact the case that this is fifteen feet and this other one is twenty-two feet?
Yes, thank you for that. Yes.
All right, so, thank you. So in fact, most of this work is a lot closer than indicated here. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Those are my questions.
Anyone else in the audience have a question? Only a question now.
There's no one else.
Does anyone else have a question? Just a question. You'll, you'll have an opportunity to speak in a minute. Any, any board member, anyone else in the audience have a question for the witness?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick, quick question? Mr. Dubinette, did you or Mr. Kay uh, attempt to, to reach out to, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Harris since the last hearing?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone in the audience who has a comment here she would like to make with respect to this matter.
Um, I have a question first, Mr. Kay, wh- why did you decide not to reach out to your neighbor?
My neighbors are completely unreasonable people. So I have no interest in speaking with them whatsoever.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment here she would like to make with respect to this matter?
Mr. Harris has his hand raised.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Wait, Mr. Harris, you need to be sworn in then. You're gonna make just raise your right, just, just raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold true, not by the truth?
I do.
State your names and address for the record, please.
My name is Walter Harris. I live at Nineteen Park Circle, Short Hills.
My name is Sonia Harris. I live at Nineteen Park Circle, along with my husband Walter Harris. And our children ages eight and ten.
Okay, thank you. So, as you know, we spoke in opposition at the last meeting, and as you recall, we live in a property abutting which was just referred to in presentation. Um, and we live at Nineteen Park Circle, the closest property to the proposed construction. Uh, we do see that the plans have been revised, and we appreciate that the current proposal, uh, makes some improvements. Uh, we noted the, uh, construction is, uh, further back, yes. And it does somewhat reduce the profile of the construction as seen from, from our home, and we appreciate those changes. On the other hand, the project still includes substantial construction in the setback zone. Uh, nearly an entire bedroom is to be built violating the setback requirement. There's a significant amount of available property on the west end of the house, which would not violate the setback. And it's not being used for construction. The application still claims as a mitigating factor that we are at a higher elevation than we aren't. Um, but most importantly, the large amount of construction in the setback zone. And still, the project is by no means fully screened by the trees to the rear of the property. Even as shown by the photographs that Mr. Dubinette just mocked up. I have one which I'd like to call the board's attention to, again, only one, um, which I showed last time, so I know you have it. But this is what I want to remind the board of.
Mr. Harris, this was what you're about to show the board as part of oh one from last hearing.
Yes, it is part of it. It is indeed. So this is the view from our ten-year-old daughter's window. Uh, you can see it. Can you see this photograph? I'm sharing, yes. So we get a outstanding view of this construction in the setback zone. I'm not gonna go through the whole presentation again. He, so given the impact on us as neighbors and the very large amount of construction in the setback zone visible and bottom, bottom bolt doesn't even there, but we, and the closeness to the property line, eight and a half feet to the property line of the construction versus twenty-two feet required for the second floor setback. We again call upon the board to deny the requested variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, can we ask questions of Mr. Harris?
Yes, you may.
So, Mr. Harris, uh, just for the record, you part your objection case in the last, uh, hearing we had was the obstruction of view that, at least from my perspective, uh, the, the portion of the proposed application on, that was on the front of the house directly above the garage. Now that has been removed. So is it fair to say that your objections as it relates to the view you were going to have from the various, uh, uh, windows that you showed is eliminated with, with, with the understanding that the new construction, although not necessarily hindering your view, will bring, will bring the, uh, the massing closer to your house. Is that a fair way to think about it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the board have a question for this? Is there anyone else in the audience? So, yes, Mr. Dubinette.
If I may, I actually have a, that, that, that photograph, which I think will be helpful. Uh, I forgot to show it, but I have the superimposed uh, proposed renovation on it. And I just would like to show that as a, as an example of what Steve was
I think would be a good idea.
Yeah, be very quick, be very quick. I'll share a screen. And, and basically, this is a view from the daughter's bedroom, which is, um,
Wait, 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 hold, Mr. Dubinette. Is this gonna be a four?
Yes, we'll make it a four.
What do we see here?
What you're seeing is two things. One is a, a bit of the existing. So you could see the very faint profile of the roof lines. And then in the darker ink, you could see our proposed roof line just rises up. So again, all the massing is behind the existing massing. And so there is no expectation that we've lost any views, any lights. And then certainly, as you get to the rear portion, you know, we have these very large, uh, mature trees that screen it. So, and, and also don't forget that bedroom window is thirty-five feet away from, well, the K's house. So it's, it's pretty far. But again, I think we did a nice job of trying to get the K's what they want in a very subtle mash matter and, and maintain this, uh, the views that the neighbors enjoy. And just a quick response is why we, we did look at other options. The house is under building coverage F A R. If we did a proposed addition to the left, we'd have to build a first floor. We would trigger, uh, many, many, many other variants. So this was the, the least impactful for the neighborhood to put here. So we hope you like it.
Any other questions from board members? Well, I'll close the public portion of the meeting now. Board members, you have comments?
I, I can start. Um, I, I think the revisions, um, make a really big difference. I'm gonna address the, what I thought was also the main issue of the objections of the Harris's was the idea of views. There are no, um, there are no openings, no windows located on the side in the addition. So there would be no um, worries about, like, looking into bedrooms, right? Um, and what I was hearing more now about the objection has to do with construction and the idea that the construction, because it's um, would be closer because of the variance. But, um, I, I'm not sure that would make such a tremendous difference in, um, noise level. Oh, so, um, I'm, I would tend to support this application.
Yeah, any other board members?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go. Because the, the last time I was inclined not to support this, but I completely agree with what Joyce said. I think that this is, uh, very well done and minimally impactful and you know, um, construction is unfortunately construction, but that, uh, you know, ends. Uh, the only thing I would have liked to see is, is, um, something in terms of additional screening, but, but besides that, I'm inclined to support this.
Hey, you had something?
So we have a lot in the R four zone here, ten thousand square feet, and twenty thousand square foot zones were fifty percent under the required amount of property. So obviously, this is probably a very, as considerate as you could probably get when it comes to the use of the property and, and achieving what the homeowner wants, you know. Pictures looking out your window, staring at your neighbor's house are not exactly very compelling when it comes to saying that that's a, that's an unreasonable request for a neighbor to add on to the back of their house. And I think the revisions are considerate, and, um, I would wholeheartedly support this application.
Yeah, I, I just wanna, uh, pay a compliment to, uh, an obviously highly talented architect. I think you did a great job in renovating it and, uh, really, really well done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion in this case?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Craig Platner?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Torres?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glat?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, next case. We're not getting into the new cases. And the first one is Two Troy Drive. Calendar number thirty-eight, twenty-three dash twenty-one. Steve Gilman. Mr. Gilman, is that you?
Yeah, it's I. Hello, hello, everybody.
Hello.
Wait, wait, just, uh, raise your right hand, whoever's gonna testify.
I, myself, my wife, and actually, we have our engineer as well.
Who's your engineer?
Raise your right hands, please.
Can I just ask, who's your engineer?
Who's your engineer?
Joe Vuch.
Okay, let me bring him over.
Let's wait for him, and then we'll swear everybody. Okay, if everyone just raises their right hands. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, not by the truth?
I do.
Your names to the record, please.
Serena Byrd.
Stephen Gilman.
Just spell your last name, Miss Byrd.
B Y R D.
Mr. Gilman.
Stephen Gilman.
Joseph Vuch. V as Victor, U I C H.
How do you pronounce that again?
Vuch.
Thank you. Right, Mr. Gilman, proceed.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Uh, so my wife and I, we moved into the neighborhood very excitedly about a year ago. Uh, hoping to, to build, you know, a, a long-term dream home for our growing family. Um, when we looked at When we looked at the property, we were told by our realtor and everyone involved that it would be a very simple matter to alter the backyard in a manner that would allow it to be usable. Unfortunately, that was not so much the case when we found out that there were some variance requirements in order to you know, move forward with with our our plans. You know, we're we're looking at three variances. One, changing the setback. Essentially, as it stands right now, we have a patio where we walk out our back door and we walk into a wall. We'd like to open that up to allow for a full patio space as well. And and that's kind of the second part as well as far as coverage is concerned. It's about a point nine seven percent variance on coverage. And then the third item we were looking to do is a fence around the portion of the front area as well as the backyard. We are expecting our first child in spring. We purchased this property for the ability to use the property in the backyard in a functional manner. The hardship in this case was finding out that that side yard is really the only kind of flat functional space that we have behind our wall retaining wall, one being high and two, it's at a fairly steep incline, which makes that space really kind of unusable for a young family. We are on the corner of Troy and Troy Drive in Great Hills. Great Hills is a busy road. We regularly see people going up and down forty fifty plus miles per hour. And our real concern hardship being to have a young child running around playing and enjoying the space could be set at danger. And that's why we wanted to create a physical barrier in order to inhibit any kind of risk in that manner. We do have plans that we're happy to show kind of what we're trying to do. As well, I submitted some images of the property, which I'm happy to also show and kind of go through different perspectives and what we're seeing, the issues that we're having, including we found even though it is a new property about four years old, that the current patio being graded very poorly and actually collapsing in on itself in areas. The wall is it's swaying in. So frankly, we kind of have to redo all of that, given the grading into the into the property and causing concern for the longevity of the home.
Anyone else testify for the applicants?
Yes, I will as their professional engineer for the project. And engineer record of the drawings submitted to the board.
Let's have the benefit of your experience and your qualifications.
I graduated from Lehigh University, the Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. Been practicing civil engineering since graduating in two thousand and six in professional realm, obtained my license as a professional engineer eight plus years ago in the state of New Jersey, hold it in good standing. I also hold a planner's license as well in the state of New Jersey the last four years. And I'm a certified municipal engineer. I most often represent boards like yourselves on behalf of the board and as the board's professional, but also provide private testimony in support of applications and have done so throughout the northern half of New Jersey, all all counties included and over twenty municipalities.
Any board members have any questions of this witness? And his qualifications proceed, Mr. Vuch.
Thank you. If I may, I'm going to share my screen so I can show you the submitted existing conditions plan and then the proposed plan. To give a better understanding of.
Please do.
Mr. Voich, we can just ask you that to the extent that you're going to be providing exhibits that have not been submitted to the board to date, if you can just identify those accordingly so that we can mark them.
Yes, I will only be presenting off of the submitted set of two, which is revision number one, the record set.
What are you saying now?
This is the existing conditions and demolition plan. And I will zoom in on the patio area. So as Mr. Gilman was stating, currently at the right rear of the property, there is a very short patio area of a shallow depth immediately off the stair sets of egress behind the building. And you'll note a setback existing condition of seventy nine point four feet, which was a slight as built variance condition from the builder's original zoning application to construct the patio. And at this line of demarcation is where the patio becomes a patio as opposed to a walkway under the zoning definitions. This space here is too shallow and unusable for seating or anything else as a patio. So the patio begins here on this left side. That intended to be at a full eighty foot, which is double the front yard setback requirement for an accessory structure in the zone on a corner lot. The proposal with this application. And this is the second plan. The proposed conditions is to enlarge that patio area by removing the cutout shallow area and cutting into the steep slope disturbance in this limited area here with some regrading around in in the steep slope areas, all in compliance with the code for steep slope disturbance. This will allow a larger patio area, a more uniform use of the patio from any point of egress on the home. You'll note that the points of egress are to the right side of the home, which is the limited area currently. Whereas from the left side in the rear patio, it's really only accessible through this this narrow area in the existing condition as well as from the driveway and around. This provides the first the first setback variance that we're requesting, the first variance we're requesting is for a setback. And that being the forty foot setback from Great Hills as a front yard setback on a corner lot to the edge of the patio, which is just outside the window well on the side of the home. The second variance is in increase over the maximum percentage allowable of point nine seven percent from seven percent allowable to seven point nine seven on the overall area of that patio. And then the third being unrelated to the patio improvement, the request to propose a fence in the front yard where it is is not permitted. So in looking at the the lot, we have a a lot of a minimum. We have a lot of a minimum lot area in the zone of twenty thousand square feet. We're just just over that number as a compliant lot of thirty square thirty one square feet larger. And of particular note for the hardship of a corner lot and seeking the variance is that the orientation of the home is to Troy Drive. The lesser of the traffic on Troy Drive than the grade traffic on Great Hills in will be the oriented side yard, but also a front yard per zoning. And with that, we have a much narrower lot at the back line of the building here, which is approximately a hundred and twenty five feet across from the side lot line to Great Hills. As opposed to if oriented on Great Hills, the house would have a hundred and seventy feet in width across the rear of the property. And in doing so, the code would only allow us to build in the later forty five feet, which is the area that the patio was proposed by the by the builder under the zoning application without variances and received an approval originally built. So any improvements to the patio area to make it a more usable space customary to a residential dwelling require and trigger the variance for the setback at the least. And then in our case, we are seeking the ability to expand it slightly above the maximum allowable square footage while still observing the maximum square foot impervious coverage requirements within the zone. And those being thirty five percent for lot coverage where we are increasing by four point one percent to twenty nine point seven percent. So still within our allowable lot coverage. But in observation of a more customary patio to to any residential dwelling, single family residential dwelling found in this neighborhood and in the zone. So it's our position that the hardships are specific to the lots size and orientation of the dwelling as well as being a corner corner lot. And with that, I'll offer to the board to answer any questions.
I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about the fence?
Sure. So the fence, as we show on the plan is proposed as an enclosure from the existing side yard on the right side here. You'll see we tie into the existing retaining wall to create a full closure so that there's for safety up along the property line to a rear retaining wall that is of the neighbors on the lot line. Shadowing that out to the Great Hills frontage. And in this in this plan, we we showed a five foot planting bed on the lot line and inset with a fence. In discussions with my client, we'd respectfully request the consideration of the board to place that fence instead on the lot line on Great Hills and provide any any landscaping as a buffer in the municipal right away. The right away here is approximately twelve and a half feet from the edge of curb to our lot line. There is existing vegetation and stone wall features in this area currently that we believe that the improvements of the landscaping proposed by by my client would provide a far better aesthetic view for anyone on Great Hills approaching the property and sufficiently screening the fence from view in the front yard to help mitigate the variance request of a fence in the front yard. The fence also is in the front yard as it relates to Troy Drive right here in this area. And again, we're proposing the possibility of turning the corner in front of the fence with the landscape bed bed that could be planted with arborvitae or any other screening evergreen.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Why is the patio on the right side not aligned with the edge of the house? Why does the project close to to Great Hills Road than the edge of the house?
It was the combination of the proposed dimensions from the architect in the layout for a fire pit area, the the grill area and open seating area. It it could.
What?
Go ahead.
What's the current dimensions of the proposed patio? Just the top of the first, yeah, the large area. What are the dimensions of?
It was roughly twenty three and a half feet deep.
By how wide?
And sixty six and a half feet wide.
Okay. And then my other question is the where the extent of the fence that where does it so it continues towards Troy and then it it turns towards the house somewhere in the middle.
At this corner here, there is an existing wall feature that you would see out in out in the property currently. And just near that point, it would turn towards this window well on the side of the house and provide connection with.
Okay, so my question, is there any reason why it doesn't turn further back, like lining with the rear facade of the house?
So again, as Mr. Gilman had stated, the side yard of the home is the most flat area out in this region. As we go off the patio and to the rear, we start to enter into these shaded areas of steep slopes on the property. So the most usable area is this area here. So we were trying to maximize the use of the area on the side of the home.
When we say steep slope, what what about about what degree angle is that slope?
So those steep slopes are based on the code requirement. Sorry, let me just see if I have it in my note as what's the steepness of that slope is. Eileen, could you happen to recall from the code what that trigger point is of a steep slope?
I I'm more interested in what's the angle, like how one how usable is it or not usable?
Up here, I will bring up a PowerPoint slide of photos submitted by the applicant. Here's a view.
Wait, 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 wait. Mr. Voich, is this has this been submitted to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe last week.
Okay, Eileen, has it? I just want to get confirmation has been.
Yes. Thank you.
We we don't know who took the pictures and when.
The pictures were taken by the owner and applicant, Mr. Gilman.
When?
Within the last month.
Last week.
Last week. So we see the steep slopes being held back by the retaining wall. And again, up into this area, not really a shelf and terrace usable space, but always on a incline grading back towards a wall of four feet or greater, which is a fall risk for anybody above the wall.
Like to ask the engineer or maybe Eileen again regarding the fence. If the fence came, you know, just say for for argument's sake, left to right and came to the back of the house, would the variance be required?
Yes, the variance is for this portion of fence here, which is along Great Road on a corner lot that is considered the front yard.
It's also for the fence that goes, if you go further scroll further up. It's also for the portion of the fence that goes from the corner of Great Hills Road all the way to the left until you get house. That's all considered front yard.
Okay. And so the fact that the fence, as as Joy was saying, comes more forward towards Troy and then goes, you know, left right to left, there's not that does not in in and of itself trigger a variance.
No, the only thing I would like to say is like you mentioned that you wanted to move the fence over and the plantings in the right of way. That's a whole, um, you know, that's something that has to be taken up with the forest. They typically will not let you plant anything in the right of way.
Okay, there is, you know, existing vegetation.
Which was probably done without the, you know, this is not a this house is relative.
Oh, yeah, I would say existing native vegetation.
Right. And I'm going to guess that they put that in and it's over the property line and it's in the challenge right away.
Or perhaps the original condition.
Yeah.
Prior without disturbance of the lot. I don't believe it was done by the the builder.
Right. So I I don't know how Mr. Doty would view. He, yeah, I don't know that he would allow plantings in the right of way.
So so if I could just comment, so, yeah, our our goal is really to to keep to the aesthetic of the neighborhood and and if anything, to try to improve upon what's already in existence. So in this case, we are looking to, you know, make a full barrier of of trees. Our variety of green giants as well. I I did talk to Mr. Cuomo in the zoning board and he mentioned to me at one point there are in the very corner of the lot two trees that kind of inhibit the view of Troy and Great Hills. Uh two trees that kind of inhibit the view of uh Troy and Great Hills. That, yeah, yeah, right there, thank you, that has caused some issue with zoning in the past. Um we voluntarily have no issue of removing those to help for the property to be further in compliant. Based on uh Mr. Cuomo's comments.
Well, Mr. Cuomo is code enforcement. He has nothing to do with the zoning board.
Correct, zone enforcement.
Yeah, so he's speaking strictly on the side triangle. And again. If they're in the right of way.
We're we're just trying to explain our willingness and 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 uh you know, opened up being compliant and and working with the the township as much as possible.
So those those plantings, I believe, are because those were planted by the developer. They're not sh- they weren't shown on the as built submitted at at the time that it the site was accepted by the municipality. Uh and constructed, but I believe they are right here adjacent to the dry well in the lot.
Correct.
And it by removing them, we would then. Roughly to this corner point here of the fence would be. The reference point to these four back to here. Which then cuts across to the to the bay window. So as an ability to open up the line of sight for the triangle of the corner.
Absolutely. And Joe, I think you showed um the hedge, the the trees that we're looking to do in the fence.
Absolutely.
Again.
So there is. A typical hedge row. Of Green Giant Arbivites matured in and squared off. As well as a. Decorative aluminum fence. Characteristic of many that you'd see in the zone. And throughout uh residential, single family neighborhoods. We are open to other suggestions. If there there are alternatives that the board would prefer.
There's a board member.
I I have a question.
Yes.
We could we go back to the patio for a second? Um I know you gave.
The patio or the.
Yeah, I guess, or or you could stop screen sharing maybe, but i- i- either way, it's fine. Um I know you gave Joy the measurements, the dimensions of the patio. Do you know how many square feet that the the proposed patio would be?
Yes.
You just tell me.
Uh well. It's on my it's on the zoning application. Going to be. Uh fifth, just just under sixteen thousand square feet. Twenty thousand square foot lot at seven point nine seven percent patio area. It's fif- just under fifteen thousand fifteen hundred ninety six square feet.
The 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 proposed patio.
Correct, the accessory structure coverage of nine point nine seven.
Okay, now, if you were to get rid of that variance, how how, you know, if you, for example, took off. Just that small area that.
This area here?
Yeah, that extends with that with that get rid of the variance.
Uh twenty five wide by. Um it would be rather close and. Yes, so here, I'm just gonna run a calculation. Uh yes, so if we round off that area, it's a twenty. And it has a twenty five by nine area here. Observing the edge of the the side of the home. Um we would be at roughly. Six point nine percent. Six point eight five to six point nine percent.
And the maximum is seven percent, correct?
And yes, seven percent is the variance. So. Um something we discussed earlier was uh the ability to reduce that variance request at the consideration of the board request. We'd be willing to do so.
Mr. Chairman can ask a question? If you i- i- if you. Reduced or eliminated that maximum accessory coverage on a corner lot variance request. Would that also? Uh increase your your setback. Um from an accessory structure on a corner lot.
It would by roughly five feet.
So instead of forty foot setback, it would be a forty five foot setback, correct?
Correct, where eighty is required.
Thank you.
Jessica, are you asking the applicant to cut back on this application?
Um, I mean, I I think that I'd like to see that. I I'm, you know, curious what my fellow board members think.
I I think it would be a good thing. Um one, it would eliminate a variance and then it would make another variance um less severe. Are are we commenting about the application? Are we taking public questions now? What are we up to?
I'm sorry, say again.
Oh, wait, what are we up to? Are we? Is there any public comments or question?
We we have not opened it up yet.
So we shouldn't be expressing our um.
Does the applicant finish with their testimony?
I mean.
The applicant finished with their testimony?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to just.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question for any of the witnesses? For the applicant?
No, there are none.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application?
No one.
No. Board members, uh call uh close the public portion of the meeting and ask board members for their comments. Anyone?
So I agree, I agree with the comments that both Joy and Jessica made regarding uh the. The patio being squared off at the house, I think that'd be a gain my support.
I would chime in with that.
My my other concern is um still about the fence. That I understand it doesn't change the variance, but um the fence, the relationship of the fence from Troy. Because I think Troy is a different type of street than Great Hills Road. I don't really have a problem with it on Great Hills. I think it it comes um. Kind of close to Troy from that perspective. I I feel like some attempt could be made to set it further back, even though I know it doesn't change the variance.
I I believe that portion. Of the fence is compliant because it is behind the front yard setback in that.
No, I understand that. I was just wondering if it would be possible at all because I feel like in appearance, it would still feel close to. I think the nature of Troy, it's a different kind of street.
That's still a front yard fence. It's a front yard fence on Great Hills Terrace.
No, I understand. I'm not.
I'm I'm telling this to.
Legal point of view, just talking from a steady point of view.
Right, but I think he was under the impression that because it was. Not forward of the house on Troy, it wasn't front yard fence. It's still a front yard fence. Because it's in the front of Great Hills. Still requires a.
Yeah, I understood. Anywhere that I tie it to the house to provide closure would still be. Correct. A front yard variance on that portion of the fence. And so we we request the use of that area for side yard flat. Passive recreation.
It would provide us more functional space and we would be obviously willing to protect the front part of that fence with um. Evergreen trees, so you wouldn't have to see that from the road.
There's a comments from board members.
I I just one question. Um the location of the fence on Great Hills Road, that is on the lot line. With the shrubbery proposed in front of it, is is that what I understood?
Uh no, on the plan, it is shown five feet into the lot with a five foot planting buffer.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion in this case? Do I understand that the applicant has agreed that the uh. Fence will be moved in to line up with the house?
We.
No, I I don't know if that's what the um. Well, let's back up before we get to the fence. Is there um. Any uh consensus from from the applicant's point side with regard to. The comments pertaining to the maximum accessory coverage on a corner lot and whether to eliminate the variance.
So we would. We would uh eliminate the variance to meet the seven percent. Or just less than that by observing the side of the dwelling as the as the edge of the patio. And then.
And Mr. And and by doing that, that would also. Increase your setback to forty five feet, correct?
Yes, correct.
Anyone else?
And I'm I'm sorry, just just to go back to the fence, um I've I've I'm I'm a little confused about kind of what was ultimately decided. So are we saying that you're not going to that the plan is to not plant? In the right of way anymore? Like where 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 are we with that?
The the application never proposed to plant in the right away. It was our request during this hearing. That it be considered, but we were it it was indicated we'd have to get other approvals from the committee. So we will not pursue that. We will simply. Uh present as shown on the plan.
As shown on the plan, okay.
And uh respectfully, if the board would consider the alternative option, I'd. I'd ask for your your thoughts on. The single variance of the uh setback to a proposed pad uh accessory structure. As one of your considered opportunities to approve with or without the fence inclusion. So we can leave here tonight. Uh with at least an approval on part if the. The location of the fence is something that is still subject to scrutiny from the board.
I'd like to, you know, do do any other board members have any comments about the fence? I just feel like there's a lot up in the air with it. Would anyone else like to maybe chime in?
I'm definitely torn on the fence, um because clearly the need, the safety aspect is is important. I mean, obviously, that's important. I can see that. On the other hand, from what I was observing, fences aren't. Fences like that aren't aren't all that common. On Great Hills Road, if I recall.
I can provide some uh in the in the presentation that was provided to the board. Um there is a second PowerPoint that shows some. Areas in the neighborhood with front yard fencing. I can bring those examples up if that would help the board.
I think it would.
Sorry, I'm with Wolfgang. I think uh safety is important from from that perspective on from Great Hills Road, so. Uh I would be supportive of that um. Uh the fence on that front.
So here are some examples of uh fencing. On Richard Drive and Lancer Drive. To the front yard of a corner lot. Similarly, on Sparta Road and Lawrence Drive. Fencing similarly as were proposed within landscaping uh immediately adjacent to the curb line. On the roadway, uh screening that fence, which is just behind it. Uh much closer to this front yard at the driveway curb line than our proposed, which is setback behind our. Dwelling facade. Fifty two Troy Drive and the corner of Troy Lane as well. With fencing without landscaping screening to that fence. Uh within ten feet of the curb, which would be roughly approximately on the property line. And in close proximity to this particular application. Twelve Troy Lane. And Great Hills Terrace. Again, the fencing here with landscaping on both sides of that fence to provide some aesthetic screening. But the fence being visible and um to the curb line. Uh only a short fifteen feet away. And further on Great Hills at seventy two Great Hills Terrace and Great Hills Road Corner. Wooden fencing immediately along the curb line and property line.
No, I mean, I understand, you know, I've seen these and I I understand they they do exist.
Yeah, and it would be our position that uh our application is customary to the zone and the aesthetics in the neighborhood. And complimentary to the the other existing single family dwellings that have similar hardships for corner lots. Create a safe environment for passive recreation in their yard.
Um, uh can I ask a question of our attorney? Bob?
First team.
So I I'm in agreement with Joy. I would I would like the fence not to be as close as it is proposed to Troy, but. It's my understanding that we 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 can't make that a condition, right? Can or can we? Does that be moved back? Can that be a condition because a variance is not required for it? Well, I I think that two things. First of all. Uh for single family homes, they are not subject to site plan review or approval. Typically, you do not uh require an applicant as a condition of approval to do something that they. Otherwise, wouldn't have to do, provided that. Um the thing you're asking him to do doesn't mitigate against any detrimental impact caused by the proposed variance. And what I understand here, if by moving the fence a bit, you're reducing. The amount of fencing in the front yard on. Great Hills Road, then I believe that the board could find justification for making that request.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I follow you, Mr. Simon.
I'm gonna call for a motion. Is there a?
Well, hold on, before we before we uh before we go to that, um so I I'm just gonna. Before with Joy, Joy, how how far back would you would you think would be appropriate for that fence to go? See, Bob, there's nothing in the in the application that has a um. A measurement associated with the fence. It's not like the number of feet or anything like that, so. I don't see how pushing the fence back from Troy in any way reduces. The need for the variance. Well, I I would argue that you are having less fence. Can we take down the um? Take down the chair, please. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry, Bob. Rob. It's all right. That's okay. So. If from what I'm gathering, from what uh you and Joy are referencing, push the fence. Push the fence back, then correspondingly, you will have less fence. In that front yard along Great Hills, and the reality is that the ordinance provides in part that front yard fences are prohibited. So if you're reducing the amount of front yard fence as defined, it's certainly well within your purview to. Make that, uh, you know, potentially a condition, if that's what you chose to do.
Even, even, even though my reduction is not like in a measured form, it's just plain by the obvious.
I would, that's correct. It's not like the number of linear feet is A and now it's B. The fact is that. Just visually and geometrically, you're reducing the amount of fence in the front yard.
Okay, so George, you have a, do you have this recommendation?
I, I, I don't have a specific recommendation. Maybe if it's, could look at a site plan, we could, uh, I mean, it's also up to the. The applicant, if they're willing to consider that.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask that you would respectively consider not taking that functional space away from our dog and our children. Just because that space is really the best space we have. It's flat space. It's good space. It aligns with the windows of the house and we would protect that. All aspects of this fence will be covered by shrubs um that will not allow visibility of that fence. So. For me, as a new mom, I feel like I would want that space for my children and my dog to play in.
Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, having, having looked at, I remember looking at the property, it seemed. It's, it's, it would seem, it seems a little awkward to break up that, it seems a little awkward, a little impractical to, to break up that stretch of. Flat yard, even though I understand and, you know. Sympathize with the sentiment regarding the fence issue, obviously.
Okay, so then, based on that, I'm, I'm comfortable leaving the fence as proposed from my perspective. And I'm also comfortable with the reduction in the patio to reduce or eliminate one of our variances. And so I would um, I would put a motion forward uh with those conditions unless somebody else has a. Another comment or suggestion.
Other than screening, of course.
Screening condition, right?
Screening condition, of course, right. Uh, can somebody uh put language to that? Anyone?
I think the language is adequate.
Okay. So then I move uh, I move approval with the conditions as we just stated. I'll second that.
Craig Cutner?
Yes.
G O D Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Katuris?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye.
Okay, next case. I think we're on to.
Okay.
Pardon me?
We are on to um ninety-three Slope, Dennis Hickey.
Then ninety-three slope and then Maple, right?
Correct.
Gary Goodman on behalf of Dennis Hickey.
Someone you need to ask music in the background?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, my, that's me. My daughter has a piano lesson, sorry.
Sound good, though.
I thought, I thought.
Yeah, she's, she's getting ready for Carnegie Hall. We're pretty excited.
Oh, nice.
I thought that was Steve with uh introducing our, our new music between applications.
Alright, so we have um Gary Goodman, who's the attorney for Dennis Hickey and Tony Galarano, who is the engineer on the matter. Go ahead, Mr. Goodman.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I represent Dennis Hickey, who's the owner of ninety-three Slope Drive. Which also is a corner property, the other street being Oxford. Um, and many of our variances this evening pertain to the fact that we too are a corner lot. And my client proposes a patio and a pool uh as his additions. Um, my witness uh tonight is Anthony Galarano, who is our engineer planner. And um, I would like to uh call him as my witness.
Let's see.
Mr. Galarano, just raise your right hand, please. You swear in front of the testimony you're about to give in tonight, Zoom hearing, to be the truth, hold straight, tell us about the truth?
I do.
Just say your name for the record, please.
Anthony Galarano.
Uh, Tony, you've um, uh, you're engineering and planning. You wanna give your credentials to the board so they can qualify you?
Sure, um, I, I have a degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology and Civil Engineering. I graduated in nineteen eighty-four. I've been licensed as an engineer and planner since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, since then, I have uh been providing testimony, uh, planning and engineering um throughout numerous boards uh throughout New Jersey. Uh, our firm and myself, we also provide um services to various municipalities in different capacities uh throughout the state.
Uh, Tony, you've been retained by uh, uh, Mr. Hickey to produce this plot plan that I believe is uh in uh provided to the board?
Yes, correct.
Uh, could you walk the board through the plot plan uh and the variances that this applicant is requesting?
Sure, um, I'd like to go to a shared screen. I, I do have an exhibit. Actually, I have a couple of exhibits uh I'd like to share with the board.
The plot plan has, has been before the board, correct? Uh, but the other exhibits you're gonna introduce as you, and we're gonna mark them as you introduce them?
Uh, yeah, so um. First off, uh, I have a uh color exhibit. It's a basically an enlarged and colored version of the, of the proposed plot plan.
Okay, so I don't believe that this is part of the application package as colored, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so why don't we mark this as A1? And, and, and I'm assuming, Mr. Galarano, you're gonna be providing testimony this evening uh in your role, both as civil engineer and professional planner?
That's correct. And so, um, so we did a colorized version, basically to help better depict or explain what the applicant is looking to do. Um, so we have is an existing dwelling facing on Slope Drive, as Mr. Goodman pointed out. Um, we have a corner lot, also fronting on Oxford Drive, uh, resulting in uh two, two front yards. Uh, what the applicant is uh proposing to do, just gonna zoom in a little bit. Uh, it's kind of, there's kind of two parts to this application. Uh, the first is a, is a swimming pool. Um, which is a, basically a free-formed uh shaped pool with a three-foot uh brickpaver walkway around the pool. Um, adjoining the pool would be a, is proposed a concrete patio. And that's uh basically to provide access to a pair of French doors that are located on the side of the house. Uh, there'll be some landscaping put in uh around, you know, adjacent to the pool and adjacent to the patio. Uh, in the rear of the house, there's a, already an existing patio. Uh, what the applicant is looking to do is to expand that patio. Uh, create a uh area for an outdoor kitchen with a pergola over the top. Uh, and then ju- next to the uh, the uh kitchen would be a fire pit with some, with some seating. Uh, the entire uh pool area would be enclosed with a uh four-foot-high ornamental fence. Uh, there is already a row of evergreen shrubs that basically enclose that side yard area. Uh, along Oxford and then they continue and extend uh along the rear of the property. Um, the fence would be installed on the, the inside of the, of the evergreens. Uh. So just to uh, they provide the uh, the safety for the pool. It is a code requirement. All pools need to be. I enclosed with a minimum four-foot-high uh fence, so um. That's part of the, uh, so again, that part of the variance, but it's associated with the pool. Uh, I do have uh also um some photos of the property. Uh, these, again, these were not submitted with the application.
Yeah, so hold on a second. So let's mark, how many photos are we looking at here?
I have three photos.
Yeah, so why don't we mark all three photos as A2? And if you can just provide some foundation for who took the photos and what they show?
Sure, so um, these photos are taken by myself, um, actually yesterday, so. Uh, the first photo is just kind of a zoomed-out, uh, pulled-back view of the, of the corner. Uh, as you can see, the uh, kind of depict, you can see the existing evergreen shrubs along the, the Oxford side. Uh, I do also have uh. Get, get down there. Um. Sorry. This is a little more zoomed in, again, showing the evergreens uh enclosing that side yard. And then this is a view, just if you were on Oxford looking towards the property, you can see again, there's the uh, the row of evergreens and. The pool will be, you know, obviously behind these to, to provide the screening to uh, you know, to the uh, street and the adjoining neighbors. Uh, there are um some variances associated with, with the application, which is essentially why we're here tonight. Uh, the uh first uh is the uh accessory structures on a corner lot. Uh, are not permitted in a front yard. So obviously, we have the pool um and the associated patio um in the front yard. Uh, the, along Oxford. Uh, fences are also not permitted in the front yard, uh, actually only permitted in the side and rear yard. Uh, and we are, again, are proposing a fence in the front yard uh on the Oxford side. Uh, the minimum accessory structure for a side yard is twelve feet. And the uh proposed setback is nine foot for the pool. And I'm just gonna go back to the site exhibit. So it's, it's nine foot to the, for the pool. Uh, that nine foot is actually measured to the walkway. Uh, there's an additional three foot, so the pool itself is actually twelve foot, but. Um, the way I understand it is the setback is measured to the, to the walkway. Uh, there's also a side yard requir- setback required for the proposed uh rear patio or the patio behind the house. Uh, that's eight-point-three uh three feet. Uh, there's also the minimum accessory structure uh setback for a corner lot has its own specific requirement that's. Twice the required front yard. Uh, so the required setback is forty feet, so the accessory structure needs to be eighty feet. And proposed is twenty-six-point-three um for the pool to Oxford, seventy-six-point-six feet for the pool uh to Slope Drive. Um, the same requirement also applies to the uh proposed patio behind the house. Um, and those proposed setbacks are forty-eight-point-four feet to Oxford and sixty-six-point-eight feet to Slope. Um, there's also a um. I'm sorry, that, I'm sorry, I take that back. That, those, those requirements are for the patio. Uh, the rear um. The rear patio um is seventy-six feet uh to Oxford. Uh, there's also a, a requirement that uh, well, pool, the pool equipment is only permitted in the rear yard and. This is proposed in the front yard. And then lastly, the maximum accessory um use coverage is seven percent of the lot area. Uh, with the applicants proposing nine-point-two feet, um, nine-point-two percent. Um, so those are the variances that the applicant is requesting. Um.
Mr. Chairman, one second, please.
Sure.
I just, I just wanna see some clarification in terms of what you're seeking. So I'm looking at um Ms. Davids. Comments regarding this application, and it says that proposed is eight-point-five percent coverage, and you just stated nine-point-two percent. Just wanna get clarification as to which one is correct. I think your application also said nine-point-two, but I see Eileen has here at eight-point-five.
Yeah, I mean, we calculated nine-point-two. That's what the applicant is requesting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Um, so before going into the um, the variances, I just have one other exhibit, and this is a um. The aerial views of the um existing house that was there prior to this house being constructed. Um, I have a two thousand fifteen aerial.
He wants to mark it, Tony.
Hold on.
Sure.
So we're gonna mark this as A3, and how many aerial photos do you have? Two?
There is a uh two thousand fifteen aerial and a two thousand eighteen, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty aerial.
So, so A3 will be aerial views consisting of two aerials, twenty-fifteen, and what's the other date?
Uh, two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Sure, and the, these were taken from the uh NJDEP database, so this is uh, again, um, generated by the DEP. So the view I have on the screen now, this is the uh house that existed before the uh was taken down and rebuilt with what you see currently there now. And um, as you can see, the existing house was orientated the same as the house that's currently there now. Um, you can see it had a limited area uh behind the house. And one thing to, I wanna point out in particular, if you notice along Oxford. That, that existing house was basically in line with the house next door. Um, and then if you look at the current footprint, uh, this is a two thousand twenty, this is the, the house that was, was ultimately built. You can see that, that setback to Oxford was actually increased. You can see now it's pushed way further back. You can see it's um. Behind and, or say setback behind where the um, where, where it would have aligned with the adjoining house. Um, I don't have the exact dimensions because I don't have, obviously, the, the previous survey, but if you look in the back of the house, you can see it's very similar. Um, this, to what was there before. Similar orientation, similar area in the rear of the uh, the house, but the. Area um with a setback from Oxford has been um, I think significantly increased, so. Um, with that, um, we're looking at the, the planning aspects of this uh. Corner lot, again, a corner lot always presents some practical difficulty. There, there's, they seem to always be challenging uh just because of the two front yards. Um, the only really usable area on, on this property is really um the, the side yard. Now, I'm gonna go back to um A1, um. This area, you know, along the side of the house on Oxford really is, is for all practical purposes, is really the, the, the usable um. Yard area for this property. It, it does present somewhat of a hardship. Um, the fact that there is a very limited area behind the house and the uh larger or more open area is along Oxford. So, I mean, we, we could. Uh, look at this um as, again, uh, as, as a hardship based on the, the orientation of the house, the uh. The fact that it's a corner lot, um, I certainly think that uh it could fall under the, the C1 criteria. Um, uh, however, if uh. One was not in agreeance and believed that it was uh, would fall under a C2, um, I think that the uh. Criteria would still be met. I, I, I think that there's um. Fact that the, the pool is screened, uh, it's uh not gonna really be visible from the uh, from the street. Um, I think really doesn't pose any negative impact to the, to the surrounding properties. Um, so I think the negative criteria is uh certainly advanced. Uh, and I believe under the positive criteria, I think this would fall under paragraph G. Um, which talks about providing sufficient space uh for um, then, to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens, so. Um, certainly, there's no master plan implications. This is a permitted use. The pool is a permitted use. These are just strictly bulk variances. So there, there's no detriment to the master plan. And again, I think that the variances can be granted in accordance with either the C1 or the C2 criteria. So I do have one more, actually I do have one more exhibit I'd like to share. This is, was again, also was not submitted with the, with the application. So.
Going to mark this as A four. And Mr. Gallerano, please describe what we're seeing here and whether you created it and if not, who and when?
Um, okay. So this was, this was created by the, the pool, pool company. Their, their designer produced this. It was given to us when in preparation of our, our plot plan. But it does give you a kind of a perspective view of what the applicant is looking to do behind the house. You can see there's the, the outdoor kitchen being supported by some decorative footings and columns. There'll be a pergola over the top of the kitchen. And then if you go to the left, you'll see the fire pit, but it's put some seating around the fire pit. So this kind of just gives you a perspective view of what the, what the applicant, the applicant is looking to do behind that, behind the house on the patio.
And Mr. Gallerano, I'm going to ask you that for A one through A four and any other exhibits that regardless of the outcome of this application, you provide them all to Eileen, please.
Yes, absolutely. Will do. So with that, I have no other direct testimony.
Questions for the board?
I'd like to start out with some questions. Do you, I'm amazed frankly with your comment that this.
Get down on the share screen, please.
Sure. Okay.
That this could be considered a hardship. Do you happen to know when the other house was demolished and this house built?
I don't know. Mr. Hickey bought the, the bill, he bought the, the house. It was already constructed. So he, he didn't build the house. The house was already.
Tony, Tony, I see Mr. Hickey on the, on the call here and the Zoom. So perhaps if we swear amen, he can answer the chairman's question.
Sure.
Dennis.
Yes, I'm here.
Wait, wait, hold on. He has to turn his camera on.
Let's get him sworn first.
Well, let's get, let's turn his camera on so we can see him.
Hi, everybody. I'm actually in an Uber right now. I was waiting to do this, but then I, I ended up having to be somewhere. I'm at my company softball. I own a company and my company softball game and I'm just getting back riding.
Let's, why don't you raise your right hand and swear you in. You swear from, say your right hand, swear from testimony you give tonight. You swore from the testimony you're going to give tonight, be the truth, hold true, not the truth.
I do.
Your name for the record, please.
Dennis J. Hickey.
When did you buy this house?
So I bought the house, actually I closed on it February 2019. It was built for a different homeowner who purchased it, but then resold it within about a year and a half time. I bought it as is. I actually made an offer on, on a house on another corner lot in Clive Hill Road. That actually was approved as a corner lot, was approved for a variance in the side yard too. So when I bought this house, I saw the side lot and knew that they were approved. So I purchased this lot and actually since about summer of 2020, we've been putting together the documents for, for this phone call.
Do you happen to know how far it is in feet from the east of the edge of the proposed pool to the next door neighbor's house?
I, I don't have that information, but obviously Tony and Gary may have it for me. I do know the house behind me has a pool and the house right to the left of me just put an extension on it and.
They have pools.
Do you have the information to answer the chairman's question with regard to the distance from the neighboring house to, I think he said the pool?
I do not.
East corner.
East corner.
The aerial, I think you can, I could go back to the aerial. At least you'll get, you can see the house on the aerial, but I don't know what the exact dimension is.
Yeah, let's take a look at the aerial, Tony.
So, so I can zoom in, zoom in a little bit on this.
I think he wants to go to your initial plan, your color drawing. Does that?
Yeah, well, we don't show the house, but I mean, the pool is situated right, you know, in this location that I'm pointing to.
The proposed pool.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Somewhere in this location. I don't know the exact dimensions to the house. So I, I can't give an.
The neighboring house is pretty close to the property line.
It's fairly close. Yeah. Again, I don't know the exact dimension, but yeah, you can see the, you know, the relative distance to the, to the line.
I'm also looking at the plan that was submitted with the application. And I'm asking myself, the, where is the screening around the pool equipment?
So the pool equipment will be located within the screened area. So the entire, let me see if I can go back to the, go back to the exhibit again. So this here, this shading here is a row of evergreens. That kind of starts along the front, continues along Oxford and it continues along the back. So the pool equipment is located.
There's a lot of holes in it.
I didn't hear that. Excuse me?
That's all right. I'm just commenting. Go ahead. Continue your answer.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that the pool equipment is located within the, the, you know, within the enclosed area.
There's no specific screening immediately around the pool equipment. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, it, it could be added if that was something that the board thought was necessary. We could put additional landscaping or additional, some solid fencing around it if needed. That certainly could be added.
Do you have any idea why this pool is the size that it is?
The pool was laid out, this was basically laid out by the pool company. So I, I don't know, you know, why this particular pool was selected. I'm sure it was work, you know, worked out with the owner.
Yeah, actually, actually I'll, I'll answer that. The pool size is identical to the pool that was approved via variance on Clive Hills Road. Gary and Tony, I sent you the address for that today. So we just matched the size that was previously approved in another location in Short Hills.
My other, my next question is, you indicated that the concrete, the proposed concrete patio adjoining the pool is there to provide access to some doors that lead to the, to the house? I'm asking, my question is, to my eye, that proposed concrete area is far wider from top to bottom. That is along the frontage on Oxford Drive from top to bottom than is required to get to those three doors. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, it's somewhat irregular in shape. Let me, I'm going to go back to the exhibit again. So it provides access. It also provides some area to put some lounge chairs. So it's not just strictly for access, but it does. The idea is to be able to access it through those doors and at the same time have some, some area for some chairs and things like that.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to ask if there are any other board members who have questions concerning this matter.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Gallerano, is there an opportunity? You're, you're at nine point two percent accessory coverage and seven percent is permitted. Are there other areas of a lot that provide you an opportunity to reduce accessory coverage?
Um, go back. Have I maybe eliminating some existing coverage to compensate?
Whether it's compensating or not, just, you know, whether, you can bring that number down at all.
We, yeah, I mean, we could tighten this up a little bit. I don't know if we would get it under the, you know, get it down to seven percent. But I'm sure if I work with the owner and the pool company, I'm sure we could, we could tweak this. So we could, we could get that coverage down if we had to.
Next question from the board member. Anyone? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question concerning this matter? Questions only now.
No one.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment you see would like to make with respect to this matter?
I have Ashley Avigdor, who I will bring over.
I'm sorry. You've raised somebody over, Eileen.
I did bring over Ashley, who had her hand raised.
Yes. Hi.
You have a question or a statement?
Um, a comment. So my name.
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be true, hold true, not the truth?
Yes.
Say your name and address for the record, spelling your name.
Sure. Ashley Avigdor, A S H L E Y, Avigdor, A V is in Victor, I G is in girl, D is in David, O R. I live across the street at 352 Oxford Drive and my front door faces exactly the area where the proposed pool will be. So my issue is that under the current plan, the pool will be highly visible to the neighbors, in particular me. My, I'll stand at my front door and be staring at a pool. The placement of the fence in, along with where the screening of the trees is, it's really highly visible and the whole corner is very exposed. The tree picture was actually a little deceiving and I should have taken some pictures today in daylight. The leland's are spaced apart. There's one or two missing. They're very sparse. You would really need a whole nother row of screening behind there, like green giants or something to make, make it not visible to the street and to the neighbors. So I respectfully, respectfully request that consideration be given to concealing everything that's going on, on that corner now.
And if I could chime in, hi, how are you? Nice to meet you. I didn't meet you yet. I'd be happy to add to this. We kind of put everything on hold. We want our privacy too. So adding bigger, better trees, we already did. I know there's one that actually died. But like I said, we put everything on hold contingent on this. But if we had to add bigger, better trees, we'd be more than happy to do so.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience who has a comment you see would like to make with respect to this matter? I guess there's nobody out there, right, Eileen?
I do not see it. Hold on. Trying to. No, there's no one else with any comments.
I'll close the public question of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask Mr. Gallerano, if he could recommend in his opinion, what we should add to most effectuate the screening that that last neighbor had asked about? You have a suggestion?
Yeah, I think what would be helpful would be a double row of evergreens. So right now there's a single row. It does look like some of them died and probably need to be replaced. But you know, certainly a double row would fill in the gaps and would make that much more private.
So that's something that the applicant would join in, in proposing.
Yes. He, as he just, you know, he just testified too. He has, would have no problem enhancing the screening. And I think that, you know, the answer is a double row, a staggered row. So you don't have any gaps in between the, in between the plantings.
Thank you.
Board members, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. And I'd be happy to hear anyone who has a comment to make on this application.
I mean, I, I have some concerns about this application. You know, the screening is definitely one of them. So I'm happy to hear that the applicant would be willing to screen things more. But the accessory use coverage, feel like this is asking for a lot. You know, standing back there today or on, on the side there today, it just, it just feels like, it feels like a lot. The pool is very close to the, to the neighbor's property. I'm not sure that I have like a better suggestion of where, you know, where things should go. I mean, you know, it's a, it's definitely an odd situation to have the house far back and have most of the property kind of on the side front yard. But you know, I definitely, I definitely have some concerns. So I'm curious to hear what everyone else thinks.
Yes.
So I, I, I agree with Jessica. I'm struggling with this and, and I, I would phrase it as there seems to be a little lack of sensitivity in this design, this kind of a, maybe an overbuild. I don't know that there's so much need for, for the accessory usage, accessory structures. The placement, it just seems to be a, just a sort of overbearing proposal that if done, you know, it could be refined. It could be more thoughtful, I, I think.
In driving around the neighborhood, it really doesn't seem like it. It doesn't seem to match the character of the neighborhood really at all.
So I think this fails in both the C1 and C2. And C1, I don't see a hardship. I think it's a manufactured hardship. He has a corner, has its inherent problems. But dunking a pool in the other front yard and having then pool equipments essentially sit in the middle of the front yard is by no means a hardship. And C2, I would say this is absolutely detrimental to our zoning plan. Putting pools in an obvious front yard is over the top. 26 Clive Hill put its pool on the opposite side of the yard. It was not on the corner side. So this is a very different application. But I would not support this application. I just don't see where it met its proofs.
Anyone else? I want to say for myself that I was appalled when I saw this property today. I agree a hundred percent with the comments that Mr. Plender made a minute ago. I think that this is overbearing. The pool is too big. The pool is too big. The uh, concrete around it is too big. And the placement of a pool that is really not screened at all. I mean, there are, there are evergreens, excuse me, along the property line between the neighbor uh, to the east and this property. But uh, sight is not the only thing one worries about when you approve a pool. You, you worry about noise and uh, people being a, and that's also true with the proposed increased patio. Um, I'm opposed to this application. I've never seen an application come before this board seeking eight variances, which is what I think they're seeking here. See the seven or eight. And I, I would vote no on this. Anyone else? Is there a motion either to approve or to deny either one?
I'm, Joe, I'm wondering if the applicant would maybe want to rethink um, the plan before we go to a vote.
Well, yeah, uh, yeah, um, uh, Ms. Glad, um, uh, I was trying to listen for whether the board was opposed in concept to the pool completely. Uh, if, if there is a suggestion that we could go back to the drawing board and modify in size and in all the aspects that the board pointed out to us, uh, they had problems with. Then, yeah, I would welcome the opportunity to uh, uh, come back with a, a redrawn plan. Uh, but uh, I take it that there is enough open-minded board members with regard to simply the concept of a pool in this side yard. Uh, if so, we would like to uh, take another shot at it. Yes, please.
I think you've heard some pretty strong testimony with respect to that pool and to the placement of it.
I, I, to be clear, I would absolutely not support any pool located in that front yard.
Yeah. Character. And as Mr. Plutner pointed out, uh, the, uh, the other application that was referenced, it's a very, very, very different situation. It's really not applicable.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I don't, I think a pool in that yard is so inappropriate, not just visually, but as Joe pointed out, for the sounds, also for the light that would be associated, it, it just doesn't make any sense.
And I would agree with the fellow board members.
I, I would agree with that as well. I'm, I'm wondering what people's feelings are regarding the, the patio. Because I have less strong feelings about that.
You're talking about the patio behind that, directly behind the house.
Yeah, the patio behind the house. I mean, just to sort of cover this all off, I would, I, I, I'm kind of okay. I, I feel okay with that. But not the rest of it.
The problem is it's very difficult to decipher the variances with.
Understood.
I look to try to do that. So I was sitting here trying to figure out what pertains to what, and it's very hard to do it. Um, because you can't exactly figure out what the square footage variances. So without the application coming back with just applying for the rear uh, you know, the rear portion of it, it's hard to do that.
I, I don't, I don't think, uh, Mr. Plutner, that the board would be in a position tonight to vote sort of piecemeal for the reasons that you stated.
I, I'm not suggesting that either, Rob. I'm just, it, I think that the, the representatives of the owner asked for some sort of sense of how we felt about this. It's like, I'm just saying that if they, I would feel okay, I think with that, if it required very minimal variance to none versus the, the rest of it. That's all.
So what I'm hearing is that uh, on the issue of the patio, um, uh, it makes some sense to try and accommodate the comments. But with regard to the very existence of a pool, it seems like the majority of the board, uh, that have voiced their opinion is pretty negative on any pool of any kind. Is that an accurate reading?
Well, I, I think at least in that low, in that location, um, you know, that I, I don't think that you, I, I'm not hearing much support for a pool in that location.
Mr. Goodman, you're gonna have to make the judgment on your own. I think it's improper to ask the board members to comment on uh, yeah, on your question.
I was just, I was just summarizing for my people that what I've heard. So, uh, yeah, at, at this point, uh, yeah, we, we might as well, uh, we're gonna re-withdraw the application at this point. And see if we can't come up with something in the future.
Okay, so I'm, I'm guessing, Mr. Goodman, when you say you're going to withdraw the application, that you're gonna withdraw the application without prejudice?
Correct.
And that, and that should just also for the benefit of the public and the board. Should the applicant decide to come back with a different version or the same version, I guess you could, of the application at a later date, that you would have to uh, submit a new application, provide new notice to the public?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Eileen, I'm sorry, question, Eileen, do we need to, we don't need to keep these materials then?
No, you don't need to. You'll get no.
The next case.
Next case is.
I'm sorry, I've managed to bury my agenda. I shouldn't get excited about cases anymore.
The last case is Williams Owalabi at forty-six Maple.
Right.
Um, and I brought over I believe both the applicant. Yes, okay. Uh, do you have any professionals appearing with you tonight or just, just you?
Uh, Mike should be here.
Mike Morse?
I'll build that. I'll just text him to join. He was on before, but he left.
What's his last name?
Uh.
I have a Mike Morse here?
Yes, that's the one.
That's him? Okay.
Yeah, that's.
He's left?
No, he's here.
Okay.
I just brought him over. He should be appearing shortly. Yep, there he is.
Where?
Right, yeah. Uh, bottom, bottom right.
I don't see him.
Well, his name is here. He's not.
Is that on video?
He needs to turn on his video.
Turn on his video. Unless he kind of has left, I don't know.
Okay, here he is. All right. If you, Mr. Morse, if you would unmute and then everybody who's gonna testify would raise their right hands, please. You need to unmute, Mr. Morse.
We've got three people.
Okay, do, just, do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold truth, done by the truth?
Uh, yes, I do. I do.
Okay, if everyone would just state their names, please, for the record, you, you could start, Mr. O.
Uh, my name's Williams Owalabi. Uh, my wife is.
Just spell your name.
Uh, W I L L I A M S. Uh, my last name is O W O L A B I.
Hey, miss O.
Um, Oyin Owalabi, O Y I N, last name O W O L A B I.
Mr. Morse. Uh, name is Michael. Last name is Morse, M O R S E.
Are you an expert witness, Mr. Morse?
Um, actually, I'm a, I'm the builder.
You're a builder?
I'm a builder.
Okay.
Yeah. Where do we start?
Whenever you want.
Okay, so thank you, um, uh, for the board, uh, to the board for hearing our application. Um, uh, my name is Williams Owalabi. Uh, we live on Maple Street, forty-six Maple Street. Uh, all we're asking for is an uh, application to adjust variance for for us so that we can uh, rebuild our deck. We do have a deck currently. Uh, but it doesn't uh, fit purpose uh, any longer. I did take some photos and sent out to the bots, who you guys might have some photos of what the, uh, the uh, our backyard looked like before and what it does look like now. So what happened is that in the last, uh, about two years ago, we began renovation of our, of our uh, kitchen, uh, bathroom upstairs and the bathroom downstairs and all of that. And in the course of that renovation, some windows were moved, some doors were moved, some places were closed and so on and so forth. And the um, the exit that we had to, to the back of the house used to be in the kitchen, but it got moved into the, into the living room. So the current exit that we have now is a set of French doors that's supposed to go outside, does not get on to the existing deck. So we need to uh, extend the deck from where it was upon to sort of we can get a step down from our, uh, from, from the living room to come out to the backyard. Also, we have a concrete patio on the, on the, um, well, the right side of the house, which we are considering uh, connecting to the deck, just to make one full uh, entire full space that we can, we can use and enjoy. Currently now, the patio doesn't lead out to the deck. The deck is on its own, so they're not connected. And it's just not, um, it's just not usable at all the way it is right now. Um, I believe one or two members of the, of the board came down to our place to take a look at what things look like. Uh, we do have a neighbor that has a much, much bigger deck than us, even though we have practically the same um, lot size. So I, I, and I, we were told that uh, the, even the current deck that we have isn't approved, we wouldn't have made approval uh, today, but that's how we bought the house. Uh, we have no, uh, we have no, there's nothing we could do about that. We have nothing to do with the, the way the deck was to begin with. So it's um, it is how we bought it. And um, for two years now, we've not been able to get out of the back of our house. And that's all we're just asking the board to permit us to build this deck. Um, and leave our, and continue living, uh, living our lives. Um, I don't know if there's anything else I need to say. The current deck, other than the fact that it doesn't extend to the door, it's, it's rotten, it's not safe to stand on, it's not, it's not even, it's, we can't use it any longer. It has to uh, mostly come down, um, for us to be able to use it. Uh, also, the, I, I know the board is always concerned about what does it look like, uh, visibility and all of that, but our backyard is completely cut and off uh, from our neighbor on the right and on our neighbor on the left. And from the um, the one in the back of us. So it's not, the deck would not be useful to anyone um, on the streets at all. Um, we'll take questions or with the question.
Before we take questions, before we take questions, Mr. Owalabi, I would like to ask you a question of our, uh, zoning officer and our attorney. I'm looking at the summary of variance, variances requested on the application and I'm noting, and I noted this afternoon that two boxes were never filled in. And I think they're important in this case.
Two boxes? I don't know. I don't know about that.
No, I'm talking to the zoning officer and our attorney. And I'm looking now at um, attachment E. And I'm asking, I'm, and I'm saying that the uh, box that is uh, called accessory coverage, existing usage is blank. And lot coverage uh, is blank, existing.
Yeah, I, because, you know, I was helping the Owalabis fill this out. I did not have the existing and I, I honestly, I felt it was we were really concerned with what they were proposing, um, which was the real issue at hand. I could probably try and let me just say. The existing lot coverage, yeah, I don't have it on here, twenty-five, twenty-nine.
Well, I'll tell you why I think they're important. Because they tell the board members, uh, the extent to which uh, the applicant is seeking variances.
No, it's, it's against what's the required. It has nothing to do with the existing. If you propose is twenty-four per five and the required is twenty, it's four, five into twenty. So it, may I, may I say something, please?
Sure.
So, um, Oyin Owalabi, um, in addition to what my husband just said, we have not been able to use our backyard for two years. Um, there is no way for someone to live in, in our town. We have to, in order for me to make even grilled chicken for my kids, I would have to pass my chicken through my bathroom window. This is very important, um, for us to be able to get out through the backyard, the doors that we have. We cannot even come, we have to, I have, we have two boys, a high schooler, middle schooler and a fourth grader. And they play sports back there. They will have to come out through the front door to walk around the house. We want to go and play and to take out the garbage. So the, the lot coverage that we have is already small. So we are already starting at a disadvantage. And three homes, the one to our right and to our left, also have a very small lot coverage. We don't, we don't have the, we don't, we, I think, I believe we're in R six. So this is a hardship and, you know, I, I would really.
Yeah, I, I think, the, the terms were, Mr. Owalabi, um, yeah, I think where the chairman was going, and I think it was a very appropriate question, was that he was trying to ascertain what the existing condition was regarding lot coverage and accessory coverage, meaning that what he was, I believe, trying to get at is that your existing excess, your existing lot coverage, excuse me, may be close to the fifty percent already. In other words, it's not like that you're providing fifty percent on a lot that hasn't been developed yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think, and I think he was asking, trying to get that information in essence, to assist you in terms of getting and assist the board in terms of giving the board a clearer picture of the application itself. Now, I don't think, if you're asking me, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's a deficiency in terms of the application being complete or for the board to make an informed decision. I think though, that it may go to the proofs, but I think that you may be able to. but I think that you may be able to get there if you look at the actual survey that was submitted with the application. And maybe either Mr. or, or Mrs. Owalabi, if you can maybe just describe to the board the difference in size of what's there right now versus what you are proposing.
I have the sizes of.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Original deck was twelve by eight. It was a very, it's been extended, I think, what, there used to be a door there, which was changed to windows. The proposed deck is twenty-eight feet wide by twelve feet deep. So it's going from about ninety-six square feet to, it's about three hundred and thirty-six square feet, about twenty-eight by twelve, according to their drawing here.
So actually.
Further back in, oh, oh.
Actually, to put that into perspective, the existing deck size would not be changing. The only thing that we'll be doing is extending where the deck is right now to meet where the door is for us to come out of our backyard, to be able to get to our backyard. Um, when the existing balcony on the side of the house doesn't have any steps to go out from, we do have a door that goes out to, um, to that balcony. So it's a matter of connecting the deck to the door and pivoting it a little bit to where the cemented balcony on the side of the house is. So it's more or less just pulling the deck from where it is right now and just joining it to the door for us to be able to come out of our backyard.
Right, but you are go, you are going from ninety-six square feet to the three hundred and sixty-eight, or whatever that was? Is that correct? Right. To do all that, is that correct?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. Mi- Mike, can you, um, I don't know if you have the drawing. So I, I don't have the numbers, but I, I, I have the visual, which I think my husband said, you know, we've provided the pictures. Um, the deck is not deep at all. So even coming out of the French door, we would be able, be able to use the deck. Um, but we need to still nevertheless come out of our, our, our backyard to get to, I mean, we need to come out of the door of the backyard to be able to make use of our yard.
If, if I can ask for clarification here, because I'm looking at a couple of the different, you know, graphics are provided here. I'm trying to understand or clarify for myself where exactly, how far does this deck extend into the area of the concrete porch? I mean, it looks like, according to the, the survey map, which was superimposed, it looks like it's coming about halfway into this concrete porch area whereby this drawing here, it looks like it goes all the way to the end of the concrete.
It stops, it stops just before the, um, the patio door. Right?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't go all the way to the end of the concrete. Um, it stops, uh, at a couple of steps into the concrete wall. Um, where the steps is going to be built.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the steps is going to be embedded into the deck. So currently, we have our stairs coming out, um, onto like a, uh, we have like a little step down that leads to where the driveway is.
Right.
But what, 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 what we're proposing is that the steps is built into the deck, so it's not protruding out and it's not taking up any more space. That's why the design looks a little bit more square.
Right, and just to clarify where the steps end and where the deck ends.
Yes.
Is like halfway into the area of the concrete porch?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, so that's what's the correct, okay. Thank you.
I, I just have one other question that, you said before the deck is, you know, rotted and what it, I mean, you're going to rip the, the existing deck out and just a new one up. That's the plan, right?
Well, ideally, that would be the plan, but then we, we heard of some rule that you need to make part of it. And so like, it's not a new deck, but a repair. So I really, I really don't understand. There's a lot of technicalities there that you can't take everything out and build a new one, which will be the ideal thing because like I said, it's, it's just not safe to step on as it is.
Where did you hear that?
I know, I know, um, uh, you know, Wolfgang just talked about it, but could you just help us understand why you don't want to, um, why you cannot just square the deck at the back of the house, why the deck has to overlap with the concrete, uh, porch?
Because it, it just makes, it just makes sense because it just connects, it just connects this concrete patio that's just there that if you, if you get in, if you go on top of the patio from inside, you cannot get on, onto the deck. It's just next to it. So it's, it's just, um, it's not, it's not practical. You can get onto the patio and be looking at the deck, or you can get onto the deck. So it's easy, right? It doesn't take any more space. It just connects it. It's not like it takes more space, we're building on new grounds or anything. It's, it's.
Um, uh, Wolfgang, you, you mentioned, are there photos of some kind that you're looking at? I don't.
No, no, it's, I was looking, there's this, uh, this, there's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And there was also this set of drawings that.
Yeah, I have that, right, okay. So we don't, we don't have any way of under, really understanding, standing how the deck is being tied into the patio, right?
But Mike, you can jump in and.
Can I elaborate on this a little? Uh, can anybody? Okay. Okay, so basically, uh, the situation here, the current deck structure is an unsafe structure. Okay, the, the, you, you cannot utilize the deck. I mean, it's the, the wood.
Okay, we got that. We understand that.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about.
So I'm, I'm just elaborating on how this is working. So basically, the deck needs to extend to the left of the property, which will still make, meet the requirement of a twelve-foot yard, uh, side yard setback. It'll still meet that requirement. And, and the reason why it has to extend over to the left side is because there was a kitchen renovation done with two patio doors and there's no access point to come out of the house right now. There's no landing, there's no stairs. So the, the existing rotted deck does not meet those current doors. So if they open their doors right now, they're going to fall down four feet to the ground.
No, yeah, okay, so, so where kind of exactly on the, uh, on the, um, uh, drawing of the, of the deck doors? Could, is there any way for us to?
They're basically in front of the steps, those doors.
The old steps or the new steps?
The, the steps that exist on the, on the.
Exactly, so.
Yeah. Those doors are like right in front of it. You open the door.
Right, right, right. So having the deck overlap the concrete patio, you don't need it to overlap the concrete patio to address the door issue, right? You don't need that.
No, we don't.
No. Okay, okay. But, but as you, as Mike said, the deck is still, uh, even though it comes out overlaps, it's still in compliance. It's, it still meets the setback.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I understand now. Thank you.
Do you have any, I think there was a reference to photos, maybe by someone on the applicant team. Do you have any photos that you can share with the board and the public at this point?
Of, uh, the way things are right now?
Of the existing condition.
I, I did say, I did send in the photos though.
I got one envelope that only had photos in it. I didn't have photos to send to the entire board. That was the only thing. It was just one envelope, but.
Oh.
Okay.
And I just got them. I, I, did you, do you have them on your computer where you could share them with the board members? I have no.
I bring that in my, I bring them in my already. I don't have them, I have, only have them on my phone.
Yeah, I, I had no way of, I, I didn't get them till probably this day, Monday, Wednesday. And I have no way of, there was only one set submitted and that was on Wednesday. So it was, yes, the, I had no way of sharing them with everyone. It was just individual photos.
I, I, I don't know if you're allowed to do this, but I, I Googled the address to see, um, what it looked like exactly. You know, because there is a good rear elevation on Realtor.com. But I'm not sure we're allowed to look at that. I don't.
Technic, technically, you are not allowed to look at that. That's it. I'll tell you a story about that some other time.
That's independent research.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, um, but I, but I think that it was in good faith to try to, to help the applicant, which I applaud. Um, I don't know if the, someone on the applicant team is able to do what Ms. Ms. Siegel did and if they would be able to then potentially share their screen.
Um, again, I have the pictures on my phone, but I don't know, it, they're not on my computer unless I can, if you give me the time, I can, I can email some of them.
Email them to you.
Email them to you.
Yes, okay. Then I'll share it from the computer. Alright. Uh, I just emailed them to my wife. Uh, you just, can you share, you, do you have a chance to share on your screen? I'll keep emailing them to you. Yeah.
I can.
So I'll keep emailing them to you, but you can share in the meeting.
Okay.
Did you send them to my hotmail?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you get it?
No.
I, I.
Okay, I just received it.
Okay.
Yes. Can you see this? Maybe I can do it this way. Okay.
We, we, you know what? We can do it that way, Eileen.
Yeah, okay. So this was the picture they sent. This is their French, their new French doors that exits the backyard and those are the steps of the existing deck.
Okay, Eileen, can you mark that photo, which was received last Wednesday, as A one, as a photograph? I am assuming that Mr. or Mrs. Awalabi took that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And did he, and when did you take? Wait, hold on, Eileen. Still on A one.
Mm-hmm.
When did you take that photograph?
Uh, last, last month.
Last month, okay. Can you show that one more time, Eileen?
Yeah.
A one, thank you.
This is the, the new French doors, which leads to nowhere. And you can see the steps from the old deck, which are in front of it. And then the, another picture, which, this is the original deck, where the window is, used to be a door, but now it's a window, so there's no, there's no functional reason for the deck in that location anymore.
Eileen, can you mark that as A two, please?
Sure. Let me see if I could. This is the neighbors' the previous. I don't know, this, which shows the.
So we're going to mark this one A three. And is this the, this is the.
This is the rear elevation showing the French doors with the existing deck and the window. So it shows kind of how, you know, it, it's just not not working in its current condition. I'll mark that A three. The other pictures are basically the same, just different.
So we, we had a picture there of the neighbors', um, deck as well. So that could just put in some, in some perspective, how they're able to use the entire back of their house and the deck, even though we have, and they even have a smaller lot than ours. They don't even have any backyard at all after the deck. There's absolutely nothing left. So that's probably more, uh, more, more, way more covered than I, than, than we, than we currently have or are proposing.
Oh, oh, yes. Can I ask a question? What are we up to?
Sure.
Yep, questions?
Okay, so the existing wood deck is not safe. So you, it, that has to come down.
Mm-hmm.
So why do you need to build your new deck? I understand that has to be to access the doors. And I also understand the desire that you want to connect it to the existing elevated, the concrete, which I guess you can call a porch or deck. But I don't understand why it has, still has to be four point eight feet from the side yard on the right. Like, what is that for? It means to over and over, you said that it's not in the right location, so why put it back there? That way you'd get rid of the variance for side yard and would also decrease the amount of accessory coverage. So I think it's a big deck proportional to the house. And I'm not really interested in what the neighbors have.
So it's actually not joint, um.
Exactly. Not what?
You said it's big in proportion to the house.
In proportion to the house. I think it is. Well, in proportion to the lot. And, and, you know, I just don't know.
Well.
In, in terms of like the maximum test coverage.
So if you, if you look at this in person.
It's very close, A C, very close.
Can you hear me?
If I'm sorry, what?
Can you hear me?
Sort of, yeah.
Okay, so I said in proportion to the house, it's actually not a big deck at all. Um, and we're not.
Well, it is, it is when you also account for the concrete deck, because that's existing. So when you add the two together, I think, I mean, I don't know, we don't have a magic number for that, but it does seem kind of big.
So I'm trying to explain to you.
Yeah.
You asked a question, so, um, the, it's not overlapping the deck, I mean, the concrete at all. It's on the same level as the concrete. Um, and what we're, what we're asking is we do have a door that leads to this concrete side balcony that leads to nowhere. So when you go on the deck from the French door and you have kids on, on that concrete side of the house, you will have to pass food across the deck to this concrete.
That, that's not the question, you know. That's not the question. The question is, why does it have to be so close to the other side of the house on the opposite side of the concrete deck? That's the question.
But that's the, that's, that's where we started off. And if we're not building, if we're not ripping the entire deck apart, we can take where the existing deck is right now and extend the deck to, you know, we're leaving the two footers. I, I don't know the names that you, you, you know, you call, you know, when you leave an existing side and, and, and just pivot it to where you, to be. Um, I mean, whatever the members propose is what we would do, the current condition right now.
I misunderstood, but I believe that Mr. Mike Moose Morse said that the new deck, the old deck, the existing deck is being demolished, but maybe I misunderstood because you're saying that now it's extaying. So could that be clarified? So could that be clarified? Is it stained or is it going?
The condition of the deck, the, the, the actual surface of the deck is completely rotted, but what Oian is referring to is she would like to possibly leave a concrete footing in the ground that's pre-existing and elaborate off that and build off of that as something to remain there from the existing deck. The 4.8 foot setback on that side of the yard was existing, and that was a pre-existing non-conforming violation in this, on this project. They bought the house this way. They didn't know, they didn't know this deck was in violation when they bought the home. So they needed the variance. They're over the law coverage. The decks falling apart, can't use it. And figured, since it's, they bought the house that way, they wanted to continue with the new deck, build it exactly where it is and just extend it over to their French doors. Another three feet more, it'll be on a concrete terrace, which has a swing gate on it, which they could walk and connect their French doors, their elevated concrete terrace, and it'll all work. I mean, I understand where they're going with this. It'll all work. It's all connected. They could come out at our house, go, walk their deck, they could walk on their elevated concrete terrace. It's not a low patio, it's an elevated concrete terrace that's part of the house.
Mike, if the deck meets the setback on the right side, right? What does the square footage of the deck turn out to be? Can you give us that number?
It's 336 square feet, exactly.
That's, that's as proposed, but if you adjust the right side, so it meets the setback and eliminate the variance, what does the square footage of the deck become?
Well, I mean, if, if you're saying to bring it, bring it to a 12-foot setback on the 4.8 side?
Right.
Okay, then it would have to be calculated. I mean.
Well, can you do that? What does that come out to?
I mean, you, you're talking for, if we move it from that area there and set it back another.
Eight feet?
Eight feet by 12, it would be about 96 square feet.
12 by 8.
6.4, yeah.
12 by 8.
Okay, so the new, so the new square footage of the deck under that proposal would be what?
96 off of 336.
Okay. So 200.
About 240, yeah, 200.
So you'd have a 12-foot setback side setback on the left and the right, then?
Right.
Correct. I don't know.
I, I would like to, I would like, the whole purpose of us getting a variance is to be able to, to keep the way we bought the house. So, I mean.
You don't need a variance to keep it the way you bought it. You'd have various to change the way it is.
Be, because when, when you open up the French door, if we keep the deck and just extend it exactly the way it is, opening the French door goes to the end of the deck.
And then, I think part of this 360 square feet that you count in is, part of it is a patio that is already existing. That's not new. We're not building that new. That already exists.
Yes.
So I think that's part of what you're counting as.
No, I, they said 336 is the size of the, the new deck, the proper size of the new deck.
Yeah, but.
Hold on, you guys, you can only speak one at a time, you guys. You can't all be speaking at once.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is part of that already is this, it's not being built newly, especially on the, on the concrete patio side. That already is, and it's part of, it's in the 3, 3, 360 square feet already. It's in there already. So it's not.
The 336 square feet is what you submitted to me showing a 12-foot depth by 28-foot width. Because that was, was coming down. So 336 minus 96, so it's, it's about 240 square feet more than what was, than what's currently there.
Right.
90, yeah. But that deck is come, proposed to come down and you're gonna rebuild a new one.
Right.
Over it, right? What, what my husband is trying to say is the calculation includes the concrete side balcony that we have now. That's not, that we, we wouldn't be able to even fit a 330 square foot deck.
Yeah, that's, that, that sounds like.
Concrete is not included in that. You're gonna, you showed a 28 by 12. The concrete is, is not even included in that. Your, your showed a 12-foot depth by 28 feet across. Probably, I mean, that's, that's what you submitted.
That's 336.
So 336 square feet, that's.
Again, again, let me, let me, let me say this again. If you take this 12 feet by, by 36, it goes all the way to the end of the concrete, existing concrete patio. That's what I'm saying. It goes all the way to the end of that. But we're not even gonna do the deck all the way there. The deck only goes as far as the new door, so that we can step out. And then it's maybe like two or three feet, it gets to the, to the concrete patio. And then we just make sure that it connects into there. We're not extending the deck all the way to the end of the concrete.
That's not the plans that are submitted, so then you resubmit the plans.
We have to go by, right.
The plans, the plans that are submitted, if you can see my screen, okay? Show it going all the way to the end of the concrete deck from one edge of the house to the edge of the concrete deck. Sounds like you're talking about it ending right here.
Yes, exactly.
You need to submit a plan for that. Because we don't know what the measurements are.
Actually, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, what they're asking to do is end it not here, but here.
Yeah, halfway.
That's what the survey shows.
So, so that they can like walk from this area to the concrete.
Exactly, that's it.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I think they're.
But what are those, what's the coverage? What are the measurements?
Mike, you have the.
Listen, this, this, this originally was submitted back in, this was a lo, long time ago. But I would probably say it's about 21 feet instead of 28 feet in length.
Yeah, but we can't really go by that.
Right, so.
Yeah, but if, if, I mean, I have the survey that was submitted and it, it has, it clearly shows it going probably midway to that concrete patio that's already there. And it, it scales at 28 feet.
Okay, so.
In this picture, though, it says 28 feet, but it shows it going to, yeah.
Right, but I mean, on the scaled survey, it scales at 28 feet.
Okay.
But I think, I think we're all in agreement, that the deck needs to overlap the concrete.
Yes.
Of course, we all agree on that. That's not an issue. It makes perfect sense to have that connection. We agree that it has to cover the French doors. The, the question now is on the other side. Does it need to go all the way over to the other side of the house where the original deck is now, where the original one is now, that it's gonna be torn down? Should the new deck be started at that exact point, or should it meet the variance and come in so that there's no need for the variance? That's really the question.
So the, we, we're here for variance because we wanted to start from where it, it starts right now?
Yeah, that is, that's what they're asking for, but the, so the board has to, the, the board needs to figure out, you know, is that appropriate? Or not? That's, that's, that's why you're here. We know that's what you're asking for. We understand.
All right.
So Joe, do you want to see if there's anyone in the audience and we can maybe go to deliberation?
Yeah, sure. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question they would like to pose? Eileen, anybody?
No, I see no hands.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment here she would like to make to the board?
No hands.
No hands?
No.
All right, board members, have a ball.
If I could, just going off what you said, if, if you look at the contractor's drawing and measure where he has it going to the end of that concrete porch at 28 feet, that stops at 12 feet from the right side property line. That's where that would bring it. So I'm, I don't know if, whose plan is correct versus incorrect. That would give you a 12 by 28 deck, and it would be 12 feet off the right side property line and 12 feet off the left side property line. But I don't know, like, this plan is different from what they submitted on the survey.
The survey looks totally different. It's not, it's also not what they're speaking about, so I don't know what we're, I don't even know what we're looking at, like, which plan.
Okay, Mike, are you able to give a different, well, the drawing that reflects that it doesn't go all the way to the, to the end of the deck? I didn't realize that this was the, kind of, the last drawing that, that you have.
Yeah, I was, I was under the impression that we actually updated that to you, Eileen, because I, I have been to town hall more than, you know, three times talking about this with you. So my, my, so I'm, I'm in shock with the, you know, with, with, with the way you're going about this, to be quite honest. Because, because what, what we, when you, when you, when you said that, that what we proposed was not possible, we actually did a different drawing. So I would like Mike to speak to that. We did submit a different drawing that doesn't go all the way to, to the end of the concrete. Right, that's what I have. I have, the marked up survey that was submitted shows the, the new deck, which was gonna be, remain 4.8 feet off the right side property line and go midway to the concrete patio. But that's not the same joint that your contractor submitted, is what we're saying. He submitted a different joint.
Yeah, that was the original one that went in. The, 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 the end of the concrete terrace there is exactly 12 feet off that property line, exactly. And that's, that's the concrete, that's for sure.
Right, but, yeah, I mean, that's what is submitted. It shows it going only probably midway from the existing concrete area. Doesn't show it going all the way over.
Correct, it could be that way, actually.
Okay, that's what, that's what the survey shows.
Yes, that's correct. That would catch the concrete terrace about three feet into that for a walk-in aisle for, for an access area. It wouldn't go all the way to the end of the terrace. It would just catch that concrete about three feet in, and then it would be fine. It wouldn't be all the way to the end.
So I based, I think based on the different plans that have been submitted as part of this application, I think the board has a threshold determination made, which is whether they, the board believes that it has enough information to make an informed decision on the application or whether the applicant would need to come back and clarify the issues that have been raised through the course of this presentation.
Yeah, I now, I now understand that, but I would like, I would like us to, what I would like the board to consider, if that, yes, I know the plan is not here now, but if that plan was here that goes to halfway the concrete, we would like to know, because it's, like we said, it's been two years. Now that we've been going on, on, on this COVID, our appointments are not easy getting by with, with, with this board. We, we're six months for this one, Elon. So I, we would like to know if, if it's okay starting from where it is right now to, not even halfway to halfway through the concrete deck.
Can I, can I ask, let me ask the applicant a question? Would it be your preference to have the deck completely overlap the concrete? Would that be a better solution for you?
We don't want to, we don't want it to be too imposing, of course, if we say, what do you want? Yes, we want it from end to end. That's what we want, but we don't want to ask for too much if.
No, but, but if it, if you're comfortable with it having overlap the concrete completely, then you can meet the variance on the other side. You give up no square footage. And you walk away with the deck the same size as you want it. It's just shifted so that you don't need the other variance. But you're still getting the same sized deck.
Hey Steve, can you ask whether there's, I'm, I'm curious as to if, if that's extended to the end of the concrete deck? Whether that would have any impact on vehicles coming into the garage, given the angle?
It looks like an overlap driveway. Yeah, it does.
Actually prefer it to start where it starts right now and just stay midway. That way it's not, it's not overwhelming.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, that was the question. So, okay.
And then we say that the step down will be inbuilt. It's not gonna be another, it's not gonna be another set of stairs that's.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. I, I just wanted to ask that question. Rob, can you explain what happens if we vote no on this to the applicant, please?
Right. So, so the reason why I asked the board a question about whether they had enough information to make an informed decision on the application is as follows. If they feel like they do and they deny your application, there is an area of law called rest judicata collateral estoppel, which means that once an application is denied, if you want to come back to the board, you need to make what is deemed to be a significant change to what is being presented by the application currently. So a lot of applicants, based on what they're hearing from the board in terms of comments, decide that they're better off, instead of asking the board to vote, to carry or adjourn the application so that, in your case, that you might provide the board with additional information to clarify some of the measurements and what you were asking for and maybe particularly some more views of the rear of the property that currently actually encroach on the 12-foot side yard setback in the area that we're talking about, the area away from the concrete deck. So it's up to you whether you want the board to deliberate and vote. But if they do deliberate and vote and they deny your application, if you want the deck to be built, you may have to come back with a substantially different plan. Otherwise, your application may be denied procedurally the second time under the doctrines of rest judicata and collateral estoppel.
All right, thank you. So if we don't, if we don't go down, down that route and agree to provide more information, how does that work? And I think the information here is to bring the new plan that shows that it goes on the midway through the concrete. That's why I wanted it, I wanted it to be clear before we, before we end, end tonight, that they'll be okay with it starting where it starts right now. And extends to the door, so we can line and then connects.
Well, why don't, why don't, why don't you let us close the public portion? Why don't you listen to us deliberate? And then you can decide if you want to go to a vote or if you want to take an adjournment. How about we do that? Okay? Okay, Joe, do you wanna close the public portion?
Well, close the public portion. Board members, what do you think about this?
I'll see if I can make it simple. On this plan right here, which is the one that was submitted with the survey, okay? Let me see if I can zoom in on this. It goes from the corner of the house where you have the existing deck, okay? It goes 28 feet across, which crosses over onto your concrete patio. And that's the one there, okay? This is the other one. Which goes all the way across the entire back of the house. I propose that one, which will cover your concrete, which is 28 feet across from where the existing deck is. Yes, you will remain with the side yard setback at 4.8 feet, but it's there now, so keep it there. And you go across to that point. So that's what I propose. That's the all we want.
That's the one we, actually.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Is that Wolfgang?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not going to a vote yet. We were, we were going to let the applicant hear our deliberation. Does anyone else want to make a comment? Either in favor or against Craig's proposal? I would prefer to see them meet the zoning requirement on the right side. I think that that would be appropriate. So that, that's my position. Anyone else?
I could support Craig's proposal.
Okay.
I would be in support of that proposal instead, that was just shown on the screen.
Okay. Okay.
I agree with Steve.
Okay.
I, I have to say, I agree with Steve also. You know, we're exacerbating other, probably, since we don't have the numbers, but probably existing non-conformances and then, you know, allowing that and keeping the other.
Joe, you have a comment?
No.
Hmm, keeping us in the dark.
Well, if we play the odds, you guys got a deck, so
I already had a motion and a second, so
Right, so
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so take the roll. So you say, wait, 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 hold on a second, hold on. So just to be clear to the applicants, you heard the motion and the seconds, you heard some discussion. Do you want them to go to a vote?
You need four affirmatives.
Yes, we, we, we're going with Craig's suggestion, and yes, we want, we want to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Craig Clatner.
Yes.
Yody Sharma.
Yes.
Joy Siegel.
No.
Steve Togar.
No.
Wolfgang Turturist.
Yes.
Jessica Glat.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Yay.
So much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look at the project.
Is there anybody who has a matter to bring before the board that is not on the agenda? I hear none. I will then call the meeting to an end.
Need a motion and a second?
It's on move.
Second.
Thank you.
Who in favor? Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night. Thanks. Thank you.